That's better. All right. It is Tuesday, August 26, 2025. We are going to call to order the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. Let's see here. Supervisor Chair Lopez will be arriving late today. And Supervisor Kate Daniels will be also arriving late. So present currently Supervisor Askew Aleho and Church. Are there any additions or corrections for our closed session today?
No additions or corrections.
All right. We have closed session items number one A through C. Is there any public comment for our closed session Board of Supervisors this morning?
There are three hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, fantastic. We have no one here in chambers and we would love to hear a public comment from our Zoom participants.
Benjamin Olachua. He's not unmuting. Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams. He's unmuted but not speaking. Sarah's iPhone.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to know what the session would be about.
This is public comment for our closed session for the Board of Supervisors. So we're doing public comment for closed session items for the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Do you have public comment for closed session?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Sarah's iPhone. Not unmuting.
Sarah's iPhone, do you have public comment for closed session? Final call for public comment for closed session for Sarah's iPhone.
Looks like Benjamin Olachua has unmuted his mic.
And we'll do public comment Benjamin. Public comment for closed session now would be your opportunity for public comment.
Nope. Last one is Resident Q. Benjamin, are you there?
Back on the second channel. And connected AGG263SE Performance Formatted. Crash damaged, ball up, electric hybrid car. The reason we neglected this is because, well, we started this because we finished the DBX and what we thought we finished the DBX. But since my dad's been driving it, it's had an oil leak and we've got to solve that. And we like to solve a problem and finish one project off first before we jump on to the other one because we know the previous one will never get done. So we are going to finish.
The last is Resident Q.
SE Performance. We've got the rear quarter. We're going to try and attempt to do this as well. There's still small dents in the quarter there. We're hoping to be able to get that out. Our main issue is all.
And Resident Q is not unmuting their mic. And that was the last one. We have three hands. Sarah. Yeah.
Okay, we're, we did public comment for closed session. We're having some technical difficulties with our Zoom comment. We had four hands raised. We've given everyone a chance to unmute and comment. However, we're not hearing any comments come through. I will reference our agenda. Actually, I'm going to ask council to reference our agenda that speaks to technical difficulties. If I could.
Sure. We have a few people with raised hands. They haven't been able to speak or they have spoken and they haven't really been giving public comment. So I think we can open it up one more time when we come back from closed session to see if there's any issues then, and I think we'll be good.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we do welcome public comment. Ideally for anyone who has, you're always welcome in chambers. And we do our best to make a public comment available via Zoom. But in the event of technical difficulties, we do reserve the right to be able to move on and to continue with our meeting. So we appreciate the participation, but do need to move on to closed session. So we will be closing public comment and moving on to recess for closed session. We'll be back here at, oh, sorry. We are going to recess for this closed session. Call to order the Board of Supervisors for the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. Again Supervisor Lopez and Daniels will be arriving late. Supervisor Askew Aleho and Church are present. We have one, two items, A and B on closed session for Water Resource Agency. Is there any public comment on our Water Resource Agency closed session today?
There is one hand raised, Resident Q.
All right. We'll call for public comment from Resident Q. This is for the Water Resource Agency closed session items.
And they are not unmuting their mic.
Okay, Resident Q, you'll need to unmute your mic to share public comment for the Water Resource Agency closed session item.
They just took their hand down.
Okay, the hand has come down. Final call for closed session for Water Resource Agency. Seeing no one in chambers and no other hands raised, we will close public comment and recess for closed session. We'll be back here at 10:30 to reconvene. Thank you. Thank you.
It is 10:30. We are going to reconvene the Board of Supervisors for the County of Monterey. It is Tuesday, August 26, 2025. We will reconvene. Thank you all for joining us. We'll do a roll call for the Board of Supervisors. Chair Lopez will be arriving shortly. In the meantime, Supervisors, ask you, Daniels, Alejo and Church are present. And we will start by asking for our Spanish interpretation services. Diego Celis is with us remotely, and if we could invite him to make the announcement, please.
Muy buenos días. Mi nombre es Diego Celis, y seré su intérprete en español e inglés para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor de hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor de hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Great, thank you. Next, we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask our honored guest, Natale Dama, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, if you would, in mind. Thank you. All right, there we go. Do we have any additions or corrections from the clerk this morning?
We have no additions and corrections for today's agenda.
All right, no additions or corrections. With that, we do have a number of ceremonial resolutions this morning. And we'll start and see if there are any public comments on our ceremonial resolutions. Seeing no one approach the dais, is there anyone online? No hands raised online. We have a motion for approval. All second. We'll take a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None. With that, our ceremonial resolutions are approved. And I'm going to ask the clerk to support me here in making sure that we get our presentations correct. So we'll start with a presentation. Okay, let's see. A presentation celebrating the 175th anniversary of California statehood and the historic role that the County of Monterey took in the founding of the Golden State. And Supervisor Alejo, that's all yours.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, on September 9th, cities and counties across California will be celebrating the 175th anniversary of California Admission Day, the day in 1850 where California was admitted as the 31st state of the Union, and it was a free state. The Office of Governor Gavin Newsom has encouraged local governments across our state to hold these celebrations, and we are doing that by starting with today's ceremony. Monterey County had a key role in that historic process as Monterey, as the city of Monterey was the location of the first Constitutional Convention in the fall of 1849, where the California Constitution was drafted and where it petitioned for statehood. Monterey had also been the first capital of Alta California under Spanish and Mexican rule. As part of our county celebration, we are kicking things off this morning with a with a special presentation today by Brian Edwards with the Colton Hall Museum by the City of Monterey. In the lobby, we have also this beautiful photo exhibit on early California history and on the California Constitution that was originally written in both English and Spanish. So California was truly bilingual from its very start. There is out there, you will see an early California flag and also a United States flag with 30 stars, the way the flag looked like just before it was admitted into the United States. This was a partnership with the Colton Hall Museum and James Perry of the Monterey County Historical Society. So to get us going, we will call up Brian Edwards to kick off his PowerPoint presentation this morning. And thank you for joining us. If we could give him a round of applause, everybody.
And thank you to the Honorable Board, and thank you to Supervisor Alejo for inviting us out here to present. So once again, we are celebrating the 175th year of California. And first off, to acknowledge our first people here in Monterey of the various Alone tribes, the Salinan, the, we have the Ramsian and the Esselen tribes. They were here for thousands of years prior. Next slide, please. And as we mentioned, the Spanish era actually started in 1769, first landed up there in basically the Pebble Beach and Pacific Grove area and founded in Monterey in 1770, really occupying that land. And part of that role was actually to find a route to the Philippines and to find for the Manila to trade with Spain. And Spain would not trade with other countries. So Spain was trying to find a, their own land and to colonize the area. And initially to give, to colonize the Alone tribes for 20 years and then pass off the land, but that never happened. Next slide, please. So in 1821, 1822 era, Mexico declared independence from Spain. And during that time, this is a photo of El Cortel. And El Cortel was the Mexican Capitol Building under, actually later on in the United States in the government time as well. But in 1822, there were only 3,500 people living in all of Alta California. So that's the entire, basically, state in the region here. By 1834, Mexico had given out land grants and about 500 land grants to people. And that's where you see on the map on the outside in the lobby where it's a diseño, and a diseño is a land grant map. Most of those were about 9,000 acres on average per person. Next slide, please. These are Californios. So a Californio is somebody that was born in Spanish era or Mexican era at the time of the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo. So the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo basically stated that everyone that became a, during the United States occupation, that anyone that was a Mexican citizen could become a United States citizen at that time. So they would provide that. So those people were considered Californios. They're active in fandangos, which are dances, having salas, big rooms with dance parties in their houses, and bull and bear fights. So there's bull and bear fight pits in the city of Monterey, and very active in horseback riding. Next slide. This is an 1842 view of Monterey. The ships out at sea, this drawing was done in 1842, are by Thomas Catesby Jones, who mistakenly claimed Alta California for the United States. And then he was told by Thomas Larkin that that was a mistake and he should not have claimed. So he had to apologize to the federal government, and he had to apologize to Mexico at that time. But he had arrived with bad intel that basically he, that we were at war. We were not at war with Mexico at that time. But he came up and without a fight and was able to capture Monterey and then left. Next slide, please. This is actually July 7th, 1846, Sloane's Landing. On that day, multiple ships arrived and Commodore Sloane, and later Commodore Stockton on another ship, came in, 250 men arrived and raised the United States' flag for, for, over there in Monterey. There was no fighting at that time. The one battle that happened here in the Central Coast was Battle of Nativity Island, which is closer out in Salinas. That was the one battle that happened out in, during, in the Central Coast in the fight between the United States and Mexico. But at this time, Thomas Larkin had been serving in Monterey as the consulate to Mexico, the only United States consulate to Mexico here in, in California. And at that time, his role was basically as an agent of the United States to try to undermine the Mexican government, to try to get them to create a California Republic. And because the California Republic did not happen, they took it over as a United States Republic. So next slide, please. This is another kind of view of Monterey in 1849 at that time. No flag is raised. I'm not sure if this was done prior to the American flag being raised or, or right after, but that's the Custom House on the right. And it's important to note during that era of the Mexican era that the Custom House was built as a site for trade, for international trade. So Mexico found that international trade was, could be very prosperous, prosperous for them as an emerging country. And so if you see in Mexico, they had what was called a California banknote. A California banknote was a hide of a cow, and that's what they would trade over here. So prior to that, there was a lot of piracy that happened outside along Pebble Beach and other areas in Pacific Grove, which we now call it, because Spain did not allow international trade. And so in Mexico allowed trade over there at the Custom House, so that's why I was there. And Custom House is also our state landmark number one. Next slide. So capital, and I should put this, it's actually capital of, Monterey is capital of Alta California in the United States era, actually from 1846, I'm a little off on this, to the end of 1849. But during that time, El Cortel, which is, this is a watercolor painting from 1849. So there was a military general, Brigadier General Riley, who was stationed in here in Monterey. And in that site, that same building, it was our first newspaper, our first public library. That was where they brought in a lot of United States government in the Mexican building, in that same building right there, which was the military capital. And one of the things that happened at the time is the gold rush. And the gold rush going from, you know, 3,500 people to over 100,000 people became a large issue. Next slide, please. So at that time, Brigadier General Riley, without the approval from the United States Congress, called a Constitutional Convention. And at the time, there was 10 regions, not so much counties, but Monterey was one of the 10 regions out there, two actually found in here in Monterey. And they asked for delegates from throughout the state. The population in Monterey County at that time was 1,872. So in an entire region, it was 1,872 people at that time. But our constitution was based on constitutions from the Mexican Constitution, Iowa, and the state of New York. Next slide, please. So a couple of the main things that came on there, the diseños, which we've mentioned, that basically the large land maps and land grants from Mexico, from the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, that influenced the maps around the state of California. All of that allowed who had land, and we were to acknowledge the land grants from that, from that era. That became a large issue, and this is part of the reason they wanted to become a state, is because the influx of people coming from throughout the country and throughout the world to dig for gold on property that was not really theirs. California did become a free state. Part of that was there were abolitionists here, but the other part was also it was anti-labor. And the thought at the time was that slave labor would, would allow people from wealthy slave states and wealthy owners to come in and outwork and not pay people for that work. And so part of it is they, there was the clay compromise, and that allowed, that clay compromise in the United States government allowed the balance, because California became the 31st state, 15 slave states, 15 non-slave states, and allowed California to become a non-slave state at that time. But property rights were extended to women, as the same thing as part of the Mexican government. We established public schools, the right to vote, and it was, Indian suffrage was debated by Delegada Noriega, but it was rejected by a vote of 22 to 21. And at that time, there, he was trying to make it so that Native Americans had the right to vote. And they voted against that, and it became the right to vote was only for white male citizens of the United States and white male citizens of Mexico. So that did a lot of harm in the later years. Next slide. And so the timeline, only 15 of the 48 delegates had been to California prior to 1846. And within that six-week timeline to design the Constitution, they did that so they could travel on the next ship that had to travel all the way down South America around Cape Horn to make it back to Washington DC. And William Hartnell served as our official translator. It was done in English and in Spanish, and it was sent to the voters. And the voters approved this to become a state by a vote of 12,061 to 811. And the 10 counties were kind of 10 regions at that time, but as you see there, Los Angeles, Monterey, Sacramento, those were the 10 regions when we originally started off. And, next slide. In the lobby, you'll also see a copy of the full state constitution. For the first 30 years, we were a bilingual state, and it's listed in our first state constitution that all documents that were supposed to be publicly posted need to be in English and in Spanish. And in 1879, we became anti, the state became anti-Chinese and anti-immigrant and anti-Mexican, and that's the way they removed that from the Spanish language at that time. Next slide. And this painting in the lobby also, this is, there was what they call a fandango, a dance, a ball at Colton Hall the night before they signed it. And this was just to celebrate the signature out there. And, next slide. This is our first public schoolhouse. So the Colton Hall was built as a, as a public hall in that kind of colonial style. And you'll see it went off to become the first public schoolhouse here in California. And next slide. And thank you, and cheers to 175 and 175 years more, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, give him a round of applause, everyone. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation, Brian. I always said my, I always say that nobody's going to tell our story unless we tell it ourselves. I used to have a local history professor out of Cabrillo College, Sandy Lyden, and he would tell everybody, it's not enough just to be born locally. To be a true local, you have to know local history. So this is what today is all about, this amazing history. And in fact, I'm really thankful to the city of Monterey, the Colton Hall Museum, because every summer, we take our young supervisors there to learn this very history. As young leaders, we know it's so important to know where we come from, to know where we're at today and where Monterey is going in the future as well. So it's my privilege today to present two resolutions celebrating the 175th anniversary of California statehood and also our historic role of Monterey County in the founding of the Golden State. So I want to bring back Brian Edwards, who is, true title is Library and Museums Director for the City of Monterey. And then, is it Robert Mendoza? Ruben Mendoza, President of the Monterey County Historical Society. And this, come on up, come on up, and I'll present to both of you. Want to join us? And I'll just be part of this resolution that we just approved. And it said on September 9th, 1850, California was officially admitted to the Union of the 31st state of the United States of America, following the signing of the Compromise of 1850 by US President Milford Fillmore. This year marks 175th anniversary of California statehood, a milestone that invites reflection on the state's diverse origins, including the millennia-long presence of Native American tribes who stewarded the land and waters of present-day California since time immemorial, and whose enduring cultures and sovereignty remain vital to the fabric of our state today. The city of Monterey holds a unique place in the state's founding. Having served as the capital of Alta California under both Spanish and Mexican rule, where civic and military and religious life flourished through institutions such as Colton Hall, the Presidio Monterey, San Carlos Cathedral, and the Custom House, the oldest public building in California, as was previously described. It was in Monterey Colton's Hall in September and October of 1849, where 48 delegates from across California gathered for the Constitutional Convention. It resulted in the drafting and the signing of the Constitution, both English and Spanish, establishing the foundation for California's governance, enshrining its civil liberties, and expressing prohibited slavery, setting the state apart during a time of deep national division. The California Constitution states, "Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, unless for punishment of crime, shall ever be tolerated in this state." And for the first 30 years, all laws were both English and Spanish. I just wanted to read this because it gives the actual votes. It says on January 29th, 1850, California statehood was introduced as part of the Compromise of 1850 by US Senator Henry Clay, leading to the introduction of the California Statehood Act, S. 169, also known as the California Admission Act. And it was approved 34 to 18 in the Senate on August 13th, 1850, and 150 to 56 votes in the House of Representatives on September 7th, 1850, later culminating in California's entry as a free state by the signing of the legislation by President Fillmore on September 9th, 1850. Monterey County is proudly recognized as one of the original 27 counties established in the state of California by the First State Legislature on February 18th, 1850, affirming Monterey County's foundational role in California's early statehood and governance. So therefore, be it resolved, the County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all our residents, hereby commemorates the 175th anniversary of California statehood and proudly honors the historic and foundational role Monterey County played in convening the 1849 Constitutional Convention, drafting California's first constitution, and petitioning for admission as the 31st state of the Union, and further declares Monterey County as the birthplace of the California Constitution. The County of Monterey hereby reaffirms its commitment to the preservation of historic sites, the recognition of significant contributions of Monterey County's diverse people, and the education of future generations on the shared values of freedom, cultural diversity, and democratic governance that defined California today. And with that, we want to present these resolutions to Brian Edwards and to also Ruben Mendoza. There you go. If we could give him a round of applause, everybody. Thank you very much.
Well, just thank you so much, and we appreciate everything. And this was a, we're looking forward to 175 or more years in the year, but it was a, thank you for the opportunity. Present.
I was told no more than three minutes. I'm Ruben Mendoza. I am the President of the Monterey County Historical Society, and this is the statement. Chair, members of the board, and county staff, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Monterey County Historical Society, I want to express our heartfelt thanks to the Board of Supervisors for this meaningful resolution commemorating the 175th anniversary of California statehood and for your continued commitment to preserving and honoring our region's remarkable history. This resolution not only honors a milestone in statehood, it also recognizes Monterey County's vital role in shaping the foundations of modern California. We deeply appreciate your efforts to elevate and preserve this history. Far more than a ceremonial gesture, this resolution affirms the county's enduring support for the institutions, sites, and communities that keep our collective memory alive. As this resolution reminds us, Monterey County has long stood at the crossroads of cultures and eras. From time immemorial, indigenous nations such as the Ramsian and Esselen, Alone, Amamutsan, and Saline and Peoples have cared for and sustained this land. Their knowledge systems, stewardship practices, and spiritual traditions continue to resonate in our landscapes and communities. Later, under Spanish and Mexican rule, Monterey became the seat of civil, military, and religious life in Alta California. Institutions like the Presidio, San Carlos Cathedral, the Customs House, and Colton Hall are not just historic landmarks, they are the reminders of a layered past that helped shape California's early identity. It was here in 1849 that California's first constitution was drafted and signed, laying the groundwork for the values of justice, multilingual inclusion, and civil liberty that still guide our state today. The diverse peoples who lived, labored, and led here, indigenous Californians, Spanish settlers, Mexican Californios, immigrants, and early American pioneers, built the cultural foundations and economic engines that continue to define our region. Nowhere is this more evident than in the Salinas Valley, where agriculture, shaped by generations of innovation and resilience, remains central not only to Monterey County's identity, but to California's status as the world's fourth-largest economy. That legacy is still growing. Through your leadership, this board has consistently supported the society's mission to preserve and interpret the diverse heritage of Monterey County. From maintaining our archives and historic structures, to collaborating on educational initiatives and cultural events, your partnership helps ensure that the lessons of the past remain accessible and relevant to all. The Monterey County Historical Society remains honored to serve as a steward of this heritage, and we thank you for standing beside us in that responsibility. As we mark this historic milestone, we are reminded that the story of California and that of Monterey is still being written. With your continued support, the Monterey County Historical Society remains committed to preserving the voices, places, and legacies that define this extraordinary county. Thank you for standing with us in this important work.
And I don't see Chris Lopez here yet, but I don't want to lose this moment. So I wanted to ask Nick Pasquale to come speak. We published a booklet on Monterey County history, so maybe he could describe some of that. And do you have a copy? I'll get you one. I'll get you one. All right, we'll pass the mic to Nick, and then we'll ask our Board of Supervisors to join us for a photo.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Lejo. This was a surprise speech here. So, the county, in honor of the 175th anniversary, in cooperation and collaboration with the Monterey County Historic Society, Colton Hall, the Monterey County Free Libraries, as well as many of our local municipal partners, put together a brief, or I used to say, a snapshot in history that will be on, distributed starting Thursday through the Monterey County Weekly's newsstand. So, there will be copies available of this in the Monterey County Weekly this Thursday. Also, this publication will be available on our website. It is available electronically, and there'll be a flip book, and there'll be a downloadable PDF as well. The nice thing about this, Supervisor Lejo's modeling it, is you flip it over and it's in Spanish. So, to honor the past history of California, and to remind ourselves of the diversity of our county, we wanted to make sure that this was available, just like the founding fathers of our state had intended, that it would be in English and Spanish. And so, it is a snapshot in history, it's not everything, otherwise that book would be as thick as this building. But we hope that those that look at it, whether it be electronic or printed, enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and to Chris, Jerry Chris Lopez for helping lead that. And we can ask our board to join us for a photo, since this is the 175th, and we're also sending a photo to the Governor's Office of this commemoration today.
All right, here. Adjusting, and I was going to grab my notes over here real quick. Make sure we don't miss anyone. Okay, next up. I'm going to step in for Chair Lopez and Ashley McDonald. Do we have anyone from the American Cancer Society with us this morning? Yes, come on up, we'll invite everyone down. Thank you. We'll invite everyone. And then, we can always take a picture. As we prepare to paint Salinas purple, in honor of the incredible work that the American Cancer Society does in celebrating and honoring and preparing for the Relay for Life of the Salinas Valley, we have one of the most incredible teams here in Monterey County and in the Salinas Valley that raises money for the American Cancer Society. And we, every year, we gather together and paint Salinas purple to celebrate the volunteer-led movement that brings communities together to celebrate cancer survivors, honor those who've lost their life, and raise funds to improve the lives of people who are affected by cancer. And the amazing volunteers who gather and support raising money for the American Cancer Society, and supporting the mission through advocacy, research, and patient services to ensure equitable access to cancer prevention, detection, and treatment, and survival. And thanks to our community's steadfast generosity, in 2024, the Relay for Life of the Salinas Valley raised more than $641,000 in Monterey County to support the lifesaving work of the American Cancer Society. And you all had a lot of fun, and created space for joy and community and celebration. And it really is an incredibly joyful space for people to come together and create community and build relationships. And for anyone who hasn't had a chance to come out to the Relay for Life, it really is one of those special, special things that makes our community amazing and supportive. So, if you're not a part of a team or a relay, you can still come out and participate. It is, it is really incredible. Continuing on with this, the resolution, the Relay for Life of the Salinas Valley has served as a beacon for hope for cancer survivors and their caregivers, raising nearly $18 million over the past 20 years, and in 2024 was ranked the first in California and second nationwide for its extraordinary impact and outreach. So, this year, on September 20, mark your calendars, the Relay for Life of the Salinas Valley promises to be a day filled with hope and inspiration, featuring a celebratory lunch and live entertainment for more than 300 survivors and caregivers, with over 60 teams and 2,000 community members expected to participate in this fight against cancer. So, it's my honor today to step in for Chair Lopez and to present this resolution on behalf of my colleagues here on the board, and all of our county, county, county employees and county residents here, who this really is a personal issue for, and we celebrate the volunteers, we celebrate our survivors, we celebrate the family members and the caregivers who are in this fight together. Thank you for dedicating the time and the care and the personal commitment. We appreciate you, and we celebrate you here today. And I will present this. And who would like to speak?
Well, I just want to say thank you, Wendy, and thank you to all of you who have signed and supported us and has been a part of the mission. And the event is a celebration, but the mission continues day in and day out. And so, with me, I have my lovely volunteers from leadership. Mark, I'll have Mark Kennedy speak, because he's been on the board longer than I have. And so, I just want to say thank you, because we've all been touched, and we will all continue to hear those words, and until this, until we do not hear those words, we will continue to fight. So, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, if you might have heard, it's 28 years we've been doing this Relay for Life, and recently, we moved it downtown. It used to be an overnight event for many, many years. Now, it's downtown Salinas, it's only five hours long. And I would suggest, on the 20th of September, come downtown, you'll be shocked. There is probably going to be, I would say, over 3,000 people are going to show up. There's going to be bands, and it's going to be a lot of fun. So, thank you for acknowledging us. I think we've had a lot of accolades along the way, but it's always nice to stand in front of the supervisors and be acknowledged. And thanks to the Monterey County for being so involved and willing to give so much money. I mean, $18 million over the last 28 years, $600,000 last year. Unbelievable. Thank you so much.
I just want my team, all my team, to be acknowledged here. Besides me is Narma Agilar, who's supportive of the teams, and that's just a job in itself, and I can't even speak to that, because it's day in and day out. So, you want to say something, Narma? And then Anna Bod, many of you know her, see her, she's committed in so many different where we're tarions, and we sit on many, many boards, but we're here today to represent the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. So, just all of you, if you want to say, shoot forward. And then, here we have a county representative who works, an employee, so thank you, thank you for being a part of this, because, you know, regardless of your hat, what you wear in your day hat, it does not matter, and this disease touches us also, if you wanted to share a little something.
I'd like to thank all of you for this recognition. There's a lot of people out there that don't understand and the resources that we offer to everyone. So, being in the public eye and getting this recognition and putting it out there brings awareness to everyone. Yes, we are celebrating, but the most important thing is bringing awareness, and, and all the event, the event offers the opportunity for someone to come and enjoy, but also learn as to what the resources are for them, for the survivors, and for all their families. So, thank you very much.
Again, thank you, everybody. This year, I'm in charge of the car raffle, so we have a 2025 Honda Civic. If you haven't bought your ticket, please see us.
I have tickets.
Oh, there we go. See, come and see Adalia. But yeah, and thank you to Salinas Honda, DG DG, for the donation of the car.
And just really quick, for those who don't know me, I'm Adalia Al, I work in human resources, and I've been involved with the Relay probably going on 20 years now. And thank you to the board, I was going to say the Board of Supervisors, and our executive team here at the county, because they've always been very supportive of us. And we've had multiple tostada fundraisers, burrito, breakfast burritos, all of the above, all going to this great cause. So, thank you for your support.
All right, thank you guys. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your leadership. It's a big production.
Thanks so much.
Well, let's do this the right way. Everybody come back down, now that you got your steps in. I, I think everybody should be down here for this one. If I could have Annette Di Adamo join us here in the front. I don't want to tire your hands out, so we're going to leave the resolution to last. I want to start by saying, when something works well, it works well, meaning you don't have to think about it. You just know that it's going to be taken care of, and that the process works, and that there's a certain faith that happens in those moments that you can't replace. And so, when Annette reached out to let me know she was retiring, I think I ignored her text for about 10 days. No, she'll reconsider it if I don't acknowledge it. But she has chosen to retire, and in my core, I know that the county has been so effective in Sacramento and DC because of the guidance and the relationships that you have given us through your hard work for so many decades. I want to thank you for all that you've given, because without you, I know that the top legislative party for Monterey County would not be clean drinking water in San Lucas. Without you, I know that our ATP funding in those same communities in San Lucas, San Ardo, Salinas, Castroville would not have been accomplished. It's your hard work that helped raise the priorities of this county and its people on those important lists around the state. You have given so much of yourself to all of Monterey County's residents, and it is with a deep sigh of sadness that I share with all of you that she is retiring. Let's give Annette a round of applause. I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to say thank you as well, so I'm going to start to my right, or I'm going to go left, sorry.
We're going to go left. Annette, I, I have had the privilege, even though I am the shortest-serving so far supervisor in Monterey County, I've had the privilege of working with you for years, and I saw the same text, and I think I did respond right away, but just gasping, oh my goodness, how can you retire? And so, I just want to say, for me, your accessibility and the clarity with which you communicate, and the ability to take ideas that could potentially be all over the place and run with them and make things happen, is what I appreciate so much. And just, I mean, if I were to talk about the, or try to identify, the people that I've had the chance to work with in the county since 2016, when I got to be part of the county, you rise to the top as someone that represents for me the good work that Monterey County does and what is possible, and I'm going to miss you so much. So, congratulations on your retirement, you deserve it, and you just know how grateful we are for everything you've done for this county for so many years.
Annette, I, I've only worked here for a couple of years or so, although I did have some awareness of what you did and some contact prior to becoming a supervisor, but what has become really clear is just how much you are effective, how thorough you are, how committed you are to what all, everything that you've ever done. And it has, it's been just, just impressive to see that. You know, I just, it was only, what have been six months here, eight months now, that since I've been on the legislative committee, had a chance to work with you on there. And so, it's a little bit of sadness in there that I know that you're going to be leaving, and I really wish I was going to have an opportunity to work with you more in that committee, but also as a member of the board. But being that I've only got this little slice of two and a half years of having the opportunity to be with you, but to see, just, just to see your, your passion, your thoroughness, as, as I said earlier, is just, it's extraordinary, and you're, you really set a high bar for everybody in this county. And it's hard to always say anybody's going to be irreplaceable, but you're about as close to irreplaceable as irreplaceable can be. So, I really wish you the, the best as you go forward in life. Whatever you do, you'll be successful, and I just hope you'll be very happy.
I too ignored your text, because what, like, what, what are, what do you say? And I kind of thought, maybe, maybe it wasn't, I don't know, it just, it wasn't the most professional reaction. But I, I feel like I've grown up with you here in the county, Annette, and like, I've learned so much from you. There's the content parts, like, the issues, but you've taught me, like, how, you've taught me so much more about how to navigate these spaces, staying calm, level-headed in these moments that feel like, how do you do that? I, I've watched you in, in moments where it feels like, how, like, how do you, but, but being, Monterey County is what Monterey County is, we are who we are, we've, we've achieved what we've achieved. Like, there's no part of this county that is what it is, that you haven't been a part of, Annette. And the challenges that we've overcome, that we've been through so, we've been through so much, and I mean, even just the last five years, but going back beyond that, I mean, we've, we have, we have grown as a county, like, I've grown as a person, but we've grown as a county and as a culture, and as, as a, as a, we've been able to achieve what we've been able to achieve, it's, it's truly, your fingerprints are, they touch all of it, they touch every single department, they touch every single, every, every, every bit of who we are is, is, like, you've been a part of it all. And, and thank you for all of that. And you are irreplaceable, 100%, but I just thank you for everything that you've given to this, this community, and thank you for choosing, choosing to work here, and thank you for choosing to work with, with us. And I wish you all the best, and I hope we stay in touch. And for all the things, you know, Chris was, you're so eloquent, Chris, speaking to the issues and some very specific things, and I, the words escape me in this moment, but I've appreciated working with you in ways that I can't even begin to articulate. So, thank you, and I'm going to give you a hug.
So, if you haven't figured it out yet, I'm filibustering. I'm not yet giving her, giving her her resolution, which means she can still change her mind. But in that, I do want to invite up Nick Chullos, who has worked with Annette the entire time, to share a little bit with us.
Thank you, Chair Lopez.
Thank you, Chair Lopez and board members. Annette, you know, I can't, everything the board members have said about you is completely a hundred percent true. As somebody that's worked with you day in and day out, really for all these years. And I've worked with a lot of different kinds of people over the years. And I can't think of anyone who is your caliber, who is just, you know, you're the kind of person that I know when I, when you're involved in a complex assignment, it'll be done completely thoroughly. And you have the ability to negotiate the most complicated legislative matters with great skill. Just amazing. And the other thing I really appreciate is when things get tough, and things have gotten tough, you have a great sense of humor. And that comes in handy, it really does. But I just want to wish you the very best. And Randy, where's Randy? And I want to wish both of you the very best as you move on to this other chapter. But it's been, to say it's been a joy working with you is a complete understatement. It's just been amazing. You've been great. And Randy, you are a lucky guy. That's all I got to say.
Hi, Annette. Please don't leave. We will miss you so much. On behalf of the County Council's Office, I've worked with you for 10-plus years, and it's been an absolute pleasure. You are such a quick study. And I've worked with departments who present you with very complex items, including water resources, which probably makes you want to pull your hair out. And you're just, you understand it, you take care of it. So competent, so patient, and very good at herding cats. So, you will be so missed. And we wish you nothing but the best in your retirement.
So, Annette, this is the first time we're meeting in person.
That's so weird.
Yeah. And, and I arrived in January of '23. So, it's been a couple of years. And one of the things I've appreciated the most about you is that you are exactly who you are. And in all this time that we've only known each other virtually, you always say exactly what you think. You always give that perspective that merges together this entire board in what Monterey County means, not just to the state, but to the nation. And, you know, we traveled to Washington DC. And every time we did, it was how great you were and how great you are. And in this moment where you're choosing to spend time with family and make the exit that you're making by ensuring that we have a warm handoff so that we will all be okay, you are giving us the greatest lesson. And I want to thank you for that because I know it wasn't easy. And I know Karina is forever, you know, grateful of everything you've done. And Karina loves public speaking. But in this, in this instance, I'm gonna channel what she's thinking and truly just say thank you. As somebody who grew up in this county in a small town of King City to farm-working parents, and then had the opportunity to come back after 30 years, you represent everything that this county is. And every action that you take is creating immeasurable opportunities for all of us. Those of us of any descent who come to this county are touched by the work that you do. And that's what I want you to take with you, is that you're teaching us right now what it is to be a public servant, but also to be able to merge all of us together, even when we disagree, to ensure that we are doing what's best for our community. So, as somebody who grew up here, thank you for giving your heart and soul. And I know you're gonna do great things. And thank you again for showing us what to do in the next step. So, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, CAO. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a very bittersweet moment for many of us that have had the opportunity to work with Annette DiAdamo. This is my ninth year as a county supervisor. I'm a former mayor, former state assembly member, and the oldest-serving county supervisor now. And I have to say, Annette DiAdamo is among the very best professionals that I've met doing legislative work in all my 17 years in elected office. I have to say, this retirement is well-deserved. Nobody could dispute that. But as many of my colleagues, when I got the call, the first thing I yelled out was "No!" And it was very, very longer than that. And then I tried to plead, if you would rescind her retirement, then I pleaded maybe one more year only, but none of that worked. But everyone, this job has been so important. We live in the fourth-largest economy in the world, a state that has so much complex legislative matters, budgetary matters that impact the lives of over 40 million Californians, but our 435-plus thousand residents that call Monterey County their home. They often say, "Your average person in our community doesn't have a lobbyist in Sacramento or Washington." Well, in Monterey County, they do. Annette has been part of that team, Ashley, our federal lobbyist. But they couldn't do the work without having a point person who, when issues come that really are gonna impact them, whether we're against something or we're for something, Annette has been that driving force on so many different issues. And I always say, when nobody's looking and you're looking out for the least among us, our poorest residents, our most disadvantaged communities, that really shows who you are. And this lady has been there being a big champion with the rest of all the five county supervisors and all her team. She has been there championing for those, the poorest people in our community. I remember very clearly, in 2020, we had three fires. Our agricultural commissioner deployed N95 masks because they, the harvest didn't stop. They needed to pick those, but there was smoke in the air. Well, that idea, we eventually made it a bill sponsored by Speaker Rivas, that now it's a standard for Cal OSHA. During the COVID pandemic, it seems like so yesterday, today. But back then, when we were fighting just to get COVID tests for our agricultural workers, we were the first and are pushing for that. She wrote the first letters to the governor's office and to the state agencies pushing for that because they were still working while the rest of us were being able to stay at home. And then the first vaccinations, we were the first to do that. Then the two little girls outside of the Taco Bell in East Salinas didn't have access to broadband. We were the first to push for what is now a $6 billion project for Middle Mile all across the state of California. All those efforts wouldn't be possible without this lady being there, pushing, working with her team. And she has to work with all the different departments. She has to work with all the legislative staff, Senate, State Senate, State Assembly, our federal offices. She is a, she's done it with such professionalism, and she's done it very effectively. We have some big shoes to fill here today after she leaves in a few days. But it's not, it's not unknown to the DiAdamo family. Her sister, DeeDee DiAdamo, is also another dedicated public servant, serving on the state water board for so many years. It really shows, your family, you really value public service. So, on behalf of all my team, Linda, Javi, Jasmine, we just want to really say how much we love and respect you, Annette. And we are gonna miss you tremendously. And I want to be the first to present you these flowers on behalf of the Legislative Committee. Congratulations.
And the filibustering continues. Let me welcome up Dominic Dersha from the Office of Speaker Rivas. They're still timing it.
What, 25 hours? We can do this. Do I get restroom breaks? Okay, we're good. Now, you know, just like everybody else, I think the hardest part, when I heard the news, was, man, I don't know who wants to fill your shoes. You know? No, no. And I was quick to tell people that, you know? Because from a staff perspective, you've always been a staffer-staffer, you know? And one of the hardest things that I think most people won't realize until you've been in the middle of all this is just how hard it is to take the vision of some very headstrong folks, respectfully, of course. But you gotta take that vision and you have to make it work. And more importantly, you have to get results. You have to get results that our community sees. And that's always a challenge because it's easy not to have faith in the work we do of public service at these things we call government. But throughout the years, you know, whether it's been from South County and places like San Lucas and the reservoir, when the speaker first entered office and you were able to help secure that funding, to the relief efforts in Paharo, your efforts have always been visible in the community. Maybe not your name, but certainly those of us who have always worked behind the scenes have had nothing but the respect that you deserve. Because when we've gone into your meetings, they've always been smooth. They've always been informative. And they've always been meetings we can easily just take something away and go, "Yeah, we can run with that," you know? And so, for somebody like Robert or John Laird, you know, people who represent rural areas, you know, for the speaker, he covers four counties, nine cities currently. And it's not always easy, believe it or not, to get information out of folks. "Hey, what do you need?" You know, you would think that would be an easy question sometimes to ask a community. Sometimes it can be the hardest question. But you've never made that difficult for the speaker to go with what the county wants and needs up in Sacramento. And I think that's just one of the reasons why we've always enjoyed the relationship that we've had with you. So, enjoy the retirement. I hope somebody suckers you back into service. I know it'll happen because, you know, good people get bored, you know? But certainly, on behalf of the speaker, I just want to join everybody here in just saying thank you for your years of service. And don't be afraid to add on, you know, one or two more. Thank you. And we're still, because you weren't in charge of this, we're still waiting for the language for our reso. But we brought a certificate today. So, this will just be the standard until we get you the resolution. Thank you.
And it appears we've run out of runway. And so, I will finally do what we said we were gonna do from the outset and present you a resolution that recognizes all your work from starting at Cal State Sacramento to that work with Gary Condit and the important work that's been mentioned here, the work in Paharo, the levees, the water funding, San Ardos, and Lucas. You have impacted so many. And so, it's my honor to ask you to enjoy retirement to its fullest extent. You've earned it and present you this resolution.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Is it on? Yeah. Okay, so this is a little overwhelming. And everyone who knows me knows I don't like this kind of attention. But wow, I just don't know how I'm gonna process all these kind words that have been said today. So, thank you so much. It has been, it has been my pleasure to spend my entire career working in some kind of public service, whether it's for Congress or for a special district or for county government or nonprofits. And I have my sister to blame for all this because she was the one that actually got me hired in my first job out of college, working for Congressman Condit. And in Washington DC, we sat across. Our desks were bedded up against each other. And she's been my biggest mentor throughout my career. So, I, it is a unique pleasure to be able to work alongside people that care so much about the communities they serve and the, and the people they serve. And to be a part of advancing that vision is just, it's a blessing. And I'm so grateful for the opportunities that this county has afforded me to, to be a part of that. And I really want to thank this board because everyone on here is like a political beast. You guys all really have strong opinions and care so deeply about our community. And you have pushed me like to the limit in terms of being able to, to advance that vision. But you've also provided very clear direction in terms of what your priorities are and what your values are as a board. And hired very capable county departments that have been able to articulate, you know, how to get there and to help. You've invested the funding in our state and federal lobbyists that helped me execute your vision. And Nick has let me really kind of take the reins in shaping the program. And I especially want to thank Supervisor Alejo. He has served on the board's Legislative Committee since he came into office as supervisor. And he has really pushed for the advancement of the program so that Monterey County isn't just one that follows along. Monterey County is one that leads in policymaking at the state and federal government. And it was his idea to start doing the county's annual legislative workshops with our legislators and things like that that make us very proactive and that have helped us be more effective in the, in the work that we've done. And I also want to thank this board and Sonia and Nick, the county executive team, because you, you sit up on the dais and you talk about the values of this county and you talk about the value of your employees. But over the last few years, as my parents were in decline and I had to step into that role of supporting them, you really did support me in that. And that's the stuff that makes, that made me want to go the extra mile for all of you because I knew that you cared about me, not just the employee, but as the person. And I really, really, truly appreciate that. I thank you for all these kind words and for this recognition today. And yeah, I'll miss all of you. Thank you.
Now, DeeDee, DeeDee, you have to put the phone down. Family, please come up. Let's do a group photo with everybody.
Nick has some flowers to present as well.
Nick has some flowers as well?
Got a lot of flowers today.
Come on forward, don't be shy.
Your husband.
Karina, you too. Nice try.
You guys want to get next to Annette?
You gotta get here. Yeah. You got this, right here.
You guys should get closer.
Thank you so much.
Let's have, let's have you guys.
Front and center here. Pardon me. Big time.
Amazing lady. I'm gonna miss you.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you again.
Yeah. Thanks for being here for this moment. And I love this.
Yes.
It's a great beginning. Thank you. All right. Oh, nice.
You're gonna be okay.
All you want. Oh, it's great. So lovely.
We have him right here for you. They're all right here. And we're gonna grab Annette right now. Thank you. Okay.
All right, at this point, we've arrived at appointments. I'll turn to see if there's any public input on appointments this morning. We have one on our calendar. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I've got a motion from Alejo. I'll second it. With all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. With that, we'll go into the approval of our consent items, 17 through 45. Is there a member of this body who wishes to remove an item from consent for comment, questions, or alternative action?
Move consent.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second from church. I'll go out to the public, see if there's any member of the public who wishes to remove an item from consent this morning. I do see one hand up. I see Mike Weaver. Mr. Weaver, we'll give you the floor for two minutes. Give you the ability to unmute yourself. You should have that now.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm pleased to see that Consent Calendar Item 28 is scheduled for a public hearing on September 16th at 10:30. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. All right, seeing no other hands up, nobody coming forward in room, we'll All right, seeing no other hands up, nobody coming forward in room, we'll close consent. I've got a motion and a second.
Actually, sorry. I think it's item 38. I tried to make sure it was just 38, which is, I think, draft minutes.
From the 14th and the 19th. 14th of January, August 19th.
From the 14th. Just a correction.
All right. Minor correction in there. So with that correction noted, the motion and the second hold?
I'll read the correction in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll just read the correction. Clarification on the county and SBB GSA working group. We looked back at the report regarding the appointment and the, believe that indicated that a supervisor and an alternate would be appointed. I think the minutes would be clarified or should be clarified to state, sorry, to state appointment of ask you as the appointee with the CEO as the alternate. For the clarification, thank you.
Okay. Motion holds?
Motion holds, thanks.
And second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. With that, we've arrived at general public comment and opportunity for the comment, for the public to share comment regarding items not on today's agenda, but within the purview of this body. We invite folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to be recognized, star nine if you're on a landline or to come forward in room. I see no one coming forward in room. No hands up via Zoom. We'll close general public comment and recess and reconvene the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency on that agenda, reconvening. Let the record reflect that all members are present. I'll see if there's any additions or corrections to this morning's agenda.
None.
All right, we have a comprehensive consent minutes here. I'm going to turn and see if there's any public comment on those minutes. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Got a motion from Alejo. Second from church, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. At this point, we'll open up general public comment on the Water Resource Agency agenda. See no one coming forward in room. No hands up via Zoom. We'll close that public comment and recess the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency and reconvene the Board of Supervisors. Let the record reflect that all members are present. With that, we'll jump into our schedule matters, beginning with a presentation and conversation on Measure AA. We'll go to Nick Chulos.
Thank you, Chair Lopez, and good morning, board members. This morning, we're going to talk with you about the recommendations from the ad hoc committee on Measure AA funding. There, you're going to be receiving recommendations from the ad hoc committee about the use of the funding as well as reaffirming or affirming three budget matters that were referred to the committee during the budget process and provide direction to staff. And we're seeking the direction frankly because we're preparing for already for budget planning for next fiscal year. And frankly, there are probably differences of opinion or, or matters that need to be clarified with how that funding, the Measure AA funding will be used so that it's clear as we do our budget work, what the parameters are that the board is, is willing to support. So I'm going to have Karina put up, we thought it would be a good idea for the, for the, the board, the public and the department heads to see the, sort of the background, how we got to where we are. And Karina, if I could put that up. So just going back a little bit in time, on March 12th of 2024 was when the board received a financial forecast, prediction from our CAO staff. And at that point, there was concern expressed by the staff that revenue growth would not match potential expenditures. So that was the, the beginning of the discussion about what can we do to augment revenue to the county? On March 28th, the CAO presented some revenue option, revenue increase options to the board. One would be a potential increase in transient occupancy tax. The other would be a potential increase in sales tax. And both of those options would require voter approval. So the board directed that we conduct polling of voters and, and that was done, that, that was initiated on May 29th to basically get the sense of the public about what would this public be willing to support. And the public was willing to support, those polled were willing to support both options, slight favor to the TOT option, but they were both supported by the public. And there was some, we were querying the public at that time about potential uses of that increased revenue. And what was expressed at the time was as priorities to the voters, homelessness, housing affordability, repairing roads and maintaining critical infrastructure. Those were the matters that kind of came to the top. On June 20th of 24, the board adopted a resolution calling for the election to place an unincorporated sales tax increase of 1% on the ballot. And then on September 24th, the board actually adopted a resolution indicating what the budget priorities would be for the Measure AA funding, were it to pass. And Karina, if you could put up the next slide. So this, this slide reflects the, and I know the board has seen this before, but these are the budget priorities that were reflected in Resolution 24-337. And based on this information, there was a public education campaign conducted by our communications branch to basically educate the public, not so much about the ballot measure per se, but about county services that, that are, that are tied in with the work that we do. So the, the ad hoc committee, I'd like to put up the next slide, Karina, at this point. These are the recommendations that the ad hoc committee has forwarded to your board. One is that the, that the budget priorities that you just saw on the screen would be essentially the budget priorities for the next fiscal year. As you can see on item, what is that, A, item two, beginning with FY 2627, the board will allocate funding on a quarterly or annual basis. And number one above that reflects that the priorities would mirror the ones that were on the screen just a moment ago. The next item down below is that revenues will focus on new programs and projects. And the last one, a kind of a key item, is that revenue shall not be utilized to fund ongoing commitments. So those are the recommendations on the use of the funding in general from the ad hoc committee. Then going down below that, there are three items, B, C and D, that were referred by the board during the budget process to the ad hoc committee. And the ad hoc committee has recommended that these be affirmed or agreed with. One is the use of $1.45 million in Measure AA revenue to support the Axon body, body cameras. And then the next two items are $50,000 each of Measure AA revenue to support the reservoirs, Agtech initiative and the Regen California Blue Economy. So those are the items that are incorporated in the, in the ad hoc committee recommendations before you today. And as the last item here was provide further direction as appropriate. And as we indicated, we seek your clarification on any priorities that you may wish to speak about or as a board endorse. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our quick introduction.
Thank you, Nick. I'm going to bring it to the board at this point, unless they want to go to the public first to have this discussion. Would you rather hear from the public before we engage? Okay, let's go to the public on this item. Again, this is Measure AA funding with the presentation just given it's an opportunity now for the public to share their comments and insights given the item before us. See nobody coming forward in room. I see one hand up via Zoom, but I don't know, is that on the other side? Give us a second here. Randy, Randy Ishi, I see your hand up, so we'll go ahead and give you the floor here and see if you wish to make a comment at this point.
Good morning, thank you very much, Chair and members of the board. As introduced, I'm Randy Ishi, Director of Public Works, Facilities and Parks. We appreciate the CEO's office and the board members with working on the continuation of the Measure AA revenues. And what staff would like to express on behalf of the Department of Public Works, Facilities and Parks, is that this is something that staff have looked at the polling numbers and have reflected very hard, hard on and already have a plan that we're working on teeing up in place to present to whatever avenue the board chooses to take, whether it be a standing committee, then full board, and should that be the avenue? We have worked on some plans that are considered early success programs for the first year with a proposal for the future years of what that may look like. The plan, to give it some insight, includes what we are characterizing tentatively at this point are secondary roads or a secondary road rehabilitation program, which it would have a focus on places that we've heard from, from the voters, as well as through our education campaign, places such as San Bonansio Road and portions of Old Stage Road and portions of VR Canyon Road and some other roads that have come up throughout the years. So we wanted to present for the board that this is something that staff have been considering, have been working on. And with this early success program that we're proposing, we're looking at something on the order of $7.6 million or so, which in looking over the estimated revenue, CCAN average rate of accrual, it's approximately a million dollars a month. And so if that program, here again, when it gets brought to the full board at the appropriate fashion, would still leave a balance remaining for the fiscal year as it won't consume the entire amount estimated for the fiscal year 26. So thank you very much, staff, to be able for any further questions and we appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, Director Ishi. All right, I don't see any other hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board. I'm going to go to the CAO and then we'll go to Supervisor Daniels.
Just a quick comment related to the affirming of the $50,000 for the item C and D. These are items that were approved as part of the budget process. There was direction from the board to refer both of those entities to the Measure AA committee, as it was understood that likely there were additional dollars that would have been requested. We added them on here just as we did measure the Axon body cameras due to them being referrals, but those two, C and D, have already been addressed. It was just a matter of just adding them to clean up the record that we've implemented those two. It's D that's, that would be new.
All right, thank you, Sonia. We're going to go to Supervisor Daniels.
So with that in mind, I, I still would like the opportunity to just ask some questions. I'm just to refresh my memory. The, would C and D qualify, and I'm big supporters of both, qualify as programs in terms of the budget priorities? Is that, is that how they fit into the, the proposal that has been discussed in the ad hoc for allocating these funds that are in line with what was originally part of the measure and what is the budget priorities that the county Board of Supervisors identified?
Part of the discussion was that these would be projects, but their actual program is much larger than just the, these two allocations. So it was anticipated that they might need to present further to the ad hoc committee. But during the board hearings, the budget hearings, it was decided that those two allocations would be directed to these two entities, understanding that there were likely other requests that would be needed.
So, and just, I'm just going to drill down a little bit to help me understand. So when you just mentioned C and D, or was it B and C? The, the two that were identified in the budget process were B and C, is that accurate?
All three of them. B, C and D. But C and D were affirmatively, the requested that it be funded. We brought them here because these three items had been referred to this committee. So we were looking to affirm for the Axon body cameras, actually for all three of these, we were working with council to confirm that there is a nexus with unincorporated area as this revenue can only be used in the unincorporated areas of the county.
So if, if perhaps when the members of the committee have the opportunity to talk, I just am wondering if they, where they fit into, even though we said use Measure AA, I want to make sure that we're, we're not creating a conflict for the future. How does, how do those two things fit in terms of the budget priorities? How do they fall within the budget priorities for use of Measure AA dollars, which I believe would go back to the original ballot language? And it, and the reason I bring that up is I'm just curious if there isn't, and, and I don't want to open a can of worms here, so if everybody else is comfortable, that's fine with me. But I'm just curious if there might be another way to, to, to get that $100,000 maybe through the mid-year, mid-year budget process or something like that, that may be more appropriate than Measure AA. But I could be wrong, so I'm looking forward to hearing from my colleagues. The other thing that, that I had a comment about is what Mr. Ishi just said and how much I look forward to that conversation and that, that presentation. And I'm, I'm looking forward to us providing the opportunity for Public Works to present and for Mr. Ishi to be able to, to articulate that early success program for year one. Because in, in at least my memory of the, of the measure, that is one of the things that more than any other thing, the constituents in my district were voting for. And I really am intrigued by this idea that he is putting together a secondary road program because when you have a lot of unincorporated roads in Monterey County, those are the roads that you're looking at constituents with no answers for. You're saying, I'm sorry, I know it's not been repaved since it was actually the, the asphalt was laid down and you've never seen it repaved, but it doesn't fall on any list and there's no plans to repave it. So I think we've got some creative things we can do with CSAs and things like that to try to expand more CSAs and things like that. But if Randy Ishi is putting together an early success program for Measure AA, I think it could just be a win-win for both the voters of Monterey County and our ability to bring these roads, the maintenance of these roads up to a level that we didn't have any other avenue for doing before. So I'm really excited and looking forward to, to, to hearing that presentation in the future. Thank you.
I'm going to go to counsel.
I just wanted to add for the record so everyone's reminded of the fact that Measure AA was passed as a general tax, so it can be used for any county purposes. And the discussion that we're having today is for the annual allotment of those funds. And this discussion will continue annually, given that it's a general tax.
All right, Supervisor.
Sure. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Supervisor Daniel stated here too, in that even from the survey that Mr. Chulos brought up, roads are always put out as the priority and is a real, a real, I think was really what drove these, this passing in the ballot is because that was listed as right at the very top, as, as something really important for this county, throughout the county. One thing that, you know, being on this, being on this ad hoc committee will state is that it's, we're still developing a process. So, you know, this is, just for the public to realize, what we're presenting here isn't like we've come to a conclusion and now we're going ahead with this. There's a lot of things to be worked out. One thing is not even raised in here, which is something that I know we're, we're talking about implementing and was discussed during the, the election when this was up, was about a, an oversight committee on making sure that the money is being spent properly as promised. So there's, there's a lot of development to go through onto this as, as well. And I, you know, I, in regard those, those two items that Supervisor Daniels brought up on the $50,000 fundings, you know, I, the council addressed that, but it's, they're both fully and unincorporated projects in that way. So that really is what opens the door because I think that's our, that's the big thing that we're, we're bound by is it's unincorporated. We listed some priorities. Technically, the money can be used for, for anything as long as, but it's got to be in the unincorporated and areas and it's got to be for public benefit, of course. One thing I do want to get some clarification on to here, because I think the public also needs to realize, because I've been reading in social media various times, like, well, we voted on this November, where's the money going? Well, the tax didn't really take place until around April, I believe. And we are just now getting really the bulk of the money in. Do we have a, a number yet of what we received? I know previously to this, we've only received a million, but that's supposed to only a fraction, we would get the first quarter because it's basically only becoming in quarterly, which is one reason why it's being proposed here. It's either annually or quarterly as per view. Do we, can we have an update on what we have?
I don't know that we have a final true up number unless the CAO is aware of a different number.
We added a number in the board agenda item that's at $2 million.
Yeah.
And that's for April and May. So just to give you an idea of how slowly it's coming in, the estimate originally, when we reviewed it, was at 29 million. The revised estimate is now at 24 million, but the revenue connected, hello, collected for this year, April and May is at 2 million at this point.
So technically, and I know economically, there's variations. Christmas is a lot busier, I'm sure, than the first quarter of a, of a year. We're well into a second, but it should be roughly around 6 million a year. So we've only got 2 million thus far. And, you know, the quarter, for the record, the quarter, when the taxes were first coming, were first being applied was for April, May and June. We're already just about to September and we've only got about a third of what we would probably be expecting in that first quarter, which shows you how slow this is coming in. And also is one of the concerns, we really just don't know how much we're going to get this first year, which this is, this is much of a... much of a feeling in the dark a little bit on the amount. But I was hoping we were a little more up to date on it.
As of this morning, we're still at that $2 million. But just to give you, in terms of background for the budget process, the Board did allocate 4.4 as part of the budget. So, this is trickling in, and purposely, we've been very cautious, because we're waiting for these dollars to roll. And we don't have an estimate that shows us what last year would have looked at. This is gonna be the first year.
Yeah, I think we're awaiting, I think, of course, the CAO is correct about the $2 million. I think we're awaiting a sort of a final quarterly true-up. But it's, we are concerned that the estimates may be not exactly what will, you know, what the revenue will materialize as. We need to see how that goes.
And it's gonna take the full year to really get that grasp, too, because who knows how big the fourth quarter is with Christmas and all, and whether that's an eight or nine million influx or what. But anyway, pretty much my comments, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. And I really feel this, these funds are really gonna be, really be essential and really critical for improving a lot of quality of life.
So, as you're wrapping up, the true-up just came in. It's at $5 million.
Okay. It's Car Week. Just kidding. Too soon. We'll go to Supervisor Askew.
Oh, my mic was on. Okay. So, just a handful of thoughts. I wanted to say thank you to the ad hoc committee for, and staff for meeting and bringing back some recommendations. I think, for starters, for me, to be, maybe part of my questions are to clarify what the scoping or the role of the ad hoc committee was, because I think maybe some of the recommendations were questions for me about what the expectation, or are we all on the same page about what the expectation or the role of the ad hoc committee was? My expectation or my understanding was that the ad hoc committee was going to provide some frameworking around how the, like a framework of allocation. So, given a slide, well, they don't have numbers, but, you know, the budget priorities slide, looking at that and saying, you know, okay, so assuming, you know, so first things, like, framework being, like, let's figure out how much money we're gonna get. So, we want to not spend it until we've received it in year one. Second framework being that we want to make sure that we're ensuring that the priorities that we committed to the public get prioritized in the funding. So, you know, 70% of the dollars that come in go to those priorities that we talked about, or 60% of the dollars go to those priorities, that, you know, some portion of that go to parks projects, you know, 20% go to parks projects, 20% go to roads, above the 25% TOT. So, I guess I was looking for some prioritization or framework of concept, conceptual framework of how we would allocate dollars, rather than a, bring a separate process from the budget, the budget process, where it's like, oh, bring us a proposal for, do we approve this, this request for dollars, and this request for dollars, and this request for dollars. I don't think it's good budget practice for us to have multiple committees where we're getting approvals separately. I think, so, so I guess I'm looking for clarification about, are we on the same page about what the role of the ad hoc is? If, I think, and then, to that point, I think that the recommendation on A, review and provide input and recommendations, if it is to have the Board allocate funding as part of the budget planning process, I'm assuming we would continue using the budgetary process through Budget Committee. However, the staff report references establishing a new standing committee to review budgetary requests for Measure AA revenue. I would have a hard, I'm having a hard time reconciling the creation of an additional standing committee, or a recommendation to create a new standing committee that would review additional budgetary requests for AA dollars. But I would support the idea of a framework for how we utilize AA money, that then is, that then the Budget Committee were to manage. So, that's one set of comments here. But I guess I'll just start with that. And then, the second recommendation here, item three, is that revenues will focus on new projects and programs, and won't be utilized for ongoing funding commitments. I think we're gonna need some balance on that. And I don't know that it's, that we're in a position, or that we were ever in a position, when we're talking about general fund dollars, to be able to say 100% of new general fund dollars can be, or should be, utilized for new programs and projects, when we're in a reality, a financial reality that we are in. I think we need to be thoughtful and think about, you know, is it 60 to 70% of the dollars go to additional road improvements, and park improvements, and emergency incremental cost increases? Or is it 50%? But some portion of these dollars, I do think, are gonna have to go to ongoing operational expenses that it takes to maintain status quo operations for our residents. There's just a reality that we have to be willing to accept and acknowledge there. What percentage that is, I think, is a discussion. So, yeah, those are my thoughts.
Supervisor Leho.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to reiterate what our County Council just advised us, right, that when we passed this measure, it was drafted in a way where it was a general tax. And when I originally brought this forward, it was intended to help address not just budgetary issues for unincorporated Monterey County, it was looking at the entire picture, because we hadn't raised our sales tax in such a long time. I get it, now that there's an ad hoc committee, we're making, we're limiting ourselves. And I get, I get the logic behind that. Obviously, even with the 1% increase, we're still among the lowest, I think, with the City of Gonzales. And I know it's a question for, down the road, maybe in 2028, maybe 2030, we might consider increasing it again. And I get it, whatever we do now will help persuade our voters that we did use that money wisely. And if we're gonna increase it again, that we're gonna continue to use it in that way. So, I get that. And I know we have to be strategic, but I agree with Supervisor Askew, too, that there's gonna be other needs. We might have a position now, but as our budget pressures become more challenged, we might have to be a little more flexible on how we use some of these funding down the road. So, I don't want to lock ourselves into a box, but I get the priority of being strategic and showing the voters, we are using it for the way it was intended, the way it was drafted. The title doesn't say it's only for unincorporated Monterey County, it says for a variety of needs. And I think, I agree, I think those are the priorities that the voters are behind. The only other thing I would add, just looking at revenues, we kind of stopped a few months ago, when we just focused on this measure. But we also had talked about relooking at a potential TOT measure. We're already going into September 2025, we're going into the new year. I just wanted to bring it up, just as an item to talk about at a future meeting. And I know you're probably, Budget Team's probably already looking at that. But those conversations need to have to happen with our hospitality partners as well, if that's gonna be a successful measure for 2026. But again, we're looking at all possible ways that we could, even TOT, we haven't raised it in many years, and we're behind our comparable counties along the central coast. So, just wanted to flag that as an issue that we could bring up not too far from now.
Thank you, Supervisor. So, I want to share, I don't disagree with any comments made so far, but the reality that the ad hoc committee has sat in has been a weird one. And what I mean by that is, this passed last fall, the public said, we're willing to self-tax, we want to see progress. And they told us what those priorities were, right? And I don't have the results in front of me, but I want to say 80% of the public said roads were the top priority. So, where we're sitting is, having heard, you heard from Supervisor Church, the amount in so far, as we'd heard before today, was like $33,000. Today, we hear it's closer to maybe two. But we also heard, we've already spent 4.4 plus the 1.5 listed in the agenda. So, we've already spent nearly 5.9 of that money that has not yet come in. But we're sitting here not having touched the number one priority. And I think that is what has driven us to put ourselves in this position of, well, given the frame of where we are, not yet having seen the money, having seen some of it going out the door, wanting to have a little more control to make sure that we're intentionally targeting the priorities of the residents who were polled and voted, to say, we're okay with this tax being imposed upon us, that we're accomplishing those goals they laid out before us. I don't disagree, again, with what Supervisor Leho was saying, in that some year, we will need flexibility. But I don't think year one through three are those years. I mean, just to put a brief number, I think, in my mind, this is when you really hunker down, focus, and make progress for the community who voted on it. And again, knowing we're out 5.9 so far, and haven't accomplished bringing that in yet, not a single road's been paid with these dollars. It's of concern to me, right, in wanting to make sure that I follow through on that commitment to community, and wanting to see the roads. And I want to acknowledge, Director Ishii, for one, having put together a plan. But more importantly, I'll share this, and this hasn't been made public yet. But last week, we had a conversation about having $1 million that was set for road repaving in South County. And he said, I can do a deep rehab, and you'll get about a quarter mile, or we can overlay 4.1 to 4.5 miles, but it's not gonna last forever. And those are the positions that we're struggling with, right? When I've got 900 unincorporated road miles in my district, I want to see that dollar go further, but I want it to be meaningful investment. So, I don't want it to be lipstick on the pig, that says, ah, it looks good, and that's it, let's move on. No. What we're looking for is meaningful change that comes from long-term investment, and again, in wanting to accomplish that early piece, acknowledging that we are not restricted, given it being a general tax in that sense. I think we, where we are restricted is in our commitment to the public. And the words that we use when we backed this measure, wanting to see this make change in our communities. And so, I want to make sure that we're true to that. And what we're asking for today is, for a few years, to have this, this structure, to be able to direct those dollars, right, in this way. I don't know that through our traditional process, I will share, and this is just me being frank, in the conversations we've had so far, there are pressures to say, well, we could have a whole, let's hold back more, let's hold back more. We're already out 5.9, right? And we don't know what that full number for a year is gonna be. I'm struggling with that, wanting to make sure, and I want to see, I've told staff this on one-on-one, and I know I've told Sonia, purple signs, right, go up on every project, that just, even if it's just two letters, AA. So, when folks drive by doing 55 miles an hour, ideally, because that's the speed limit on an unincorporated road without a speed limit posted, I know folks go faster. So, maybe even at 70, that they understand, hey, that's where my dollar went, right? And that color, as they go by at high speeds, not too high, they know that that is their dollar being reinvested into their roads. That's my goal with these early years. Let's show some progress, and why this structure, to me, as a starting off point, was something I was comfortable recommending to my colleagues on this board. Supervisor Church.
Just a little follow-up, and I agree entirely with Supervisor Lopez on things here. But again, this, these priorities here, I think we have to just take council's words into impact of that, that this has got to be reviewed every year. You know, this is what we're looking at right now, this, and we're presenting this out here without having gone through a full year. It's not really gonna be possible to throw in this year into the beginning of the budget process as we get up for next year, because that's gonna start in January. And we're only gonna have this quarter and one other quarter at this point. We still will not have had the Christmas quarter ended. So, we won't have any idea of what we're gonna be able to count on. So, there's, as I said earlier, there's a lot of feeling in the dark, as we're going through with this, of understanding where we're gonna go onto there. In terms of new programs and projects, I think it's a little clarification, as I understand it on that, we're not looking at something just brand-new that we haven't done, is gonna, we're going off in a totally new direction onto something. It's like roads, for example. We're not saying we can only spin this on new roads that have not, we're just paving for the first time. We're talking about roads that are in existence, that we're now doing a paving program onto them. So, I want to make sure that that's, I think, understood, that it will be within the existence of what we have, and what we have been doing, and what we plan to do. So, it kind of fits into our, into the whole county operation that way. And the last thing is, just to make a real clarification on the unincorporated part, I believe through council, that we are bound to that, from the way it was drafted. Is that correct?
That's correct. It derives from a Revenue and Taxation Code section that I don't have off the top of my head, but I'll look.
That is, that is-
Unless Shane has it off the top. He doesn't either. We'll get it to you in just a minute.
But that is the one thing that we're really bound by, I understand in this, is that more than-
Well, you're bound by that, and the fact that it's a general tax. Those two parameters, yes.
Those two parameters.
Supervisor Askew.
So, I think the additional context is really helpful. And I'll just say that that was not clear, reading the recommendations or the staff report for me. And so, hearing the verbal discussion has been very helpful. So, really, what I hear, and I think this needs to be clearly communicated in writing for us moving forward, because I think the concern, the concern for me is that, you know, we, and I'll just reference the developments aside, or the TOT, for instance, we put things in process or in writing once, and then that becomes how it moves forward forever. And I think that would be the concern, that I don't want us to find ourselves in a situation where, year after year after year, we're now-
Round of the formula.
We've bound, we've bound ourselves to, well, it's been this way now forever. We now find ourselves that way with contributions that we've made. Well, we made it once, and now it's bound into our budget forevermore, right? Like, that's the reality, and that happens. And I get it, like, that's just how things work. I don't want that to become what happens in this case. So, I think, to be very clear, what we're saying is, the framework that the committee, what I hear the committee saying, is that we want to get through a full year to determine what the actual amount of money is. We would like for those dollars in the first year to be prioritized for highly visible road projects, is I think what I'm hearing, with clear communication about how those dollars are spent. I would personally add, and parks projects, we've got a Parks Master Plan that we've been talking about extensively in many, many venues, which would also be highly visible. So, but to the committee's point, highly visible road projects, and that that would go through the budget, formal budgeting process that we currently have, and that it would all be revisited after the first year. So, that would be how I think I would hear, how I would formalize what I'm hearing, if I've got that wrong. But I think we need to be, have that written, and very clearly documented.
My only concern with the one-year threshold is, we will still be collecting that fourth quarter, right? Like, so are we talking a year and a half, coming back, so that we've gone through that cycle, understand, I post true-up, how much money is actually in? But that, that's why, in my mind, I was saying three years, so you get a trend, right? But a year and a half, two years, I mean, to put a timeframe on it, where we can actually see the pattern.
So, on the Board report, this is why we wanted to tag it to a fiscal year. What we noticed when the priorities were initially identified in that resolution, is that it was tagged to fiscal year '24, '25. So, for this current fiscal year '25, '26, we wanted to confirm, yes, those are still the priorities that we would work towards as the dollars are coming in. And then, for, as we prepare for fiscal year '26, '27, having that discussion about whether we would allocate it quarterly or annually, for that same reason, versus committing to dollars that have not yet been received, we'll have a better idea for fiscal year '26, '27, because we'll have this initial year in. So, we purposely left it somewhat loose, to be able to gather the direction from the full Board. And that way, the ad hoc would have, at least for fiscal year '25, '26, how we would move forward.
Now, I've left Shane standing there awkwardly, and I will turn on his microphone. Go for it, Shane.
Hello. Thank you, Chair. The reason I rise to speak is, the question was, what was the Revenue and Taxation Code section? That is 7,285. That's 7285. And the final sentence that is guiding the discussion is this, and I'll just read it to you briefly. "The revenues derived from the imposition of a tax pursuant to this section shall only be used for general purposes within the area for which the tax was approved by qualified voters." So, applying the facts in this case, the vote went out to the unincorporated area, therefore, we're tied to un- we're tied to unincorporated area. Just a quick note while I have your attention is that in our discussions, sometimes there's a conflation with unincorporated purpose and unincorporated area. So I don't mean to confuse you, but really, unincorporated area is what you understand it to be on a map. Unincorporated purpose would be something like, hey, we have to house people in a jail. That's an unincorporated purpose, but the jail's in the city of Salinas. So there's not a lot of case law on this, but I think that the statute's pretty clear as I just read it and why we're advising the way that we are.
Thank you, Shane. Supervisor Askew.
Yeah, so in response to CIO's comment, if the question is, do we hold, do we receive the money and then direct how it's spent, or do we allocate the expenditure of the money as it's being received, I think was what I heard the question, that you're looking for direction. Given that our strategic reserve is not full and that we're waiting on significant amounts of FEMA dollars to come back to us to fill our strategic reserve, and that it's, the likelihood of receiving those dollars is not what we would hope for it to be in the immediate future, I'm very comfortable giving direction to say that we could accumulate the AA dollars over the course of this year and then give the direction to expend them after we've accumulated them.
On a quarterly basis, or are you saying at the end of the year?
I'm saying on a, for the annual basis, so that we, just the reality that if we were to need those, need that cash for something that happens, we don't have a strategic reserve that's fully full at this point. And I would feel much more comfortable knowing that we have cash reserves sufficient to utilize in the event that we were to find ourselves in a situation where we would need them. So I'm comfortable giving the direction to say we accumulate the dollars and we expend them on, at least for this first year, on an annual basis.
And I would disagree and say, let's go quarterly for the purpose that if we wait till the end of the year, that's one more year, the public will not see a single dollar invested in the roads, and movement come after having voted for it.
And we didn't do that already. We made decisions to use some of this money already in June.
Exactly.
So it's like, we can't go back and say, okay, let's start next. We had the limited budget options, and so we agreed that, informally, that we were going to set this money aside, it needed to go through this committee first, now we're dealing with it here. But I agree, as we get money and we know that we have it in an account, we need to deliver and not have it wait, because otherwise, that's when voters get frustrated, and they're saying, "We're not doing what we promised." So I get that very clearly. That's our responsibility. We have to do it well. We have to, when we do these projects, we should be working with Nick Pasquale to communicate and let the public know that we are doing what we said we were going to do with these dollars.
Thank you. I'm going to go to my left. Supervisor Daniels.
So I still have one question that I do not believe was answered, and it prompted a comment from council that I'm not sure how it was connected, but I still don't understand, and it's unincorporated side, how the economic development projects, even though we said at the budget hearing that we wanted those funded and they were directed to the AA committee, how they fall within the budget priorities for Measure AA or the priorities set for Measure AA. And I'm just looking for an answer to that question. I realize it is whatever type of taxation you referred to, that it is a general tax and can be used on anything. That's fine. But I'm just looking for an answer as to how those two projects fall within the guidelines of what we told the voters. And those are two separate things.
So I'll take just one piece because my staff sent me the poll that we did, right, as we asked folks. And on that list, ranking at 61% was helping residents develop job skills and connect with local jobs. So I could see a nexus there, but to your question, I don't know that it's specifically called out because it was a general tax in that frame. But, I mean, other than that, it really is up to this board, right, how we spend those. But in terms of messaging, that was the one piece I saw that kind of connected there.
And that's all I was looking for in that question. Thank you.
Yeah. And so just to lay out a little more, because I've got the polling in front of me, and thanks to Monica back in King City for sending these to me. Street maintenance and pothole repair was the highest with 84%. Number two was water and sewer infrastructure, 81%. Those were your only two in the 80s. And then you had a couple in the 70s, including reducing homelessness, providing healthcare services, emergency services, and supporting emergency communications, as well as parks right at 70. So those were kind of your second tier after your 80s. So just know those are, those are what I was referencing when I was trying to find a way to make impactful and visible change for the community in our conversations at the ad hoc committee.
It's attached to the item.
It is attached to the item. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I just bring up one more issue that we haven't raised? I want to bring it up because this is work on the Pajaro Levy, Supervisor Church, because as we're speaking, they're doing a cleanup that started yesterday. The Pajaro Regional Flood Management Agency, its mission is to work on the levees, not necessarily homelessness, but they, even then, that agency's putting some limited dollars towards dealing with that. The Santa Cruz County side does a cleanup, then they all jump to the Monterey County side, and the problem worsens for Supervisor Church's constituents on that side of the river. I just want to be clear, for us, as we're looking at these dollars, to keep that in mind, that they don't need a whole lot of dollars, but when they do need them, especially when they're asking for support from the Sheriff's Department, which is very critical, because as they start cleaning people up, sometimes things could go wrong bad very fast. And I just want to put that out there, hoping our sheriff would support that if resources are needed. Maybe this is something that we could use in the future, but because we know that issue's not going away, the work on the levy needs to happen. But addressing the homelessness issues there is a very important one, and that is, that falls in line with some of these goals that were stated in the Measure AA itself.
All right, so we have the numbers coming up here. And again, that would qualify under both those, right, the homelessness and then the infrastructure, if there was any needs to true that up. But again, I think at this point so far, we've spent 5.9, and total collective, the number was 2 million? Or 5?
We're at 6 now.
While we've been in the, we went from 5 to 6? Wow!
So it's 5, 6.
Microphone.
Just so you know, there is, there is a lag, but Debbie and Michael are tracking this, and we are between 5 and 6. So we anticipate, obviously, Car Week is not in the numbers right now. So right now, it is only for the first quarter, which would be April, May, June.
Yeah, okay. So essentially, we're about breakeven now, so it would take another quarter before we actually come back with recommendations to expend anything based on where numbers are on, we're about breakeven. Okay. And that's not the slide I was looking at, but, yeah. It was, it had more data broken down, kind of sidebar graphs with extremely important, and, keep going, keep going. That one. Right. So there you see the 84 that I mentioned, the 81, only two in the 80s, and everything dropping into 70s. Yeah. But again, 84 is an incredible number as a percentage of a community that would agree that, right, they want to see roads. So as we process that, I guess the direction from what I've heard here to see if I can bring it into a motion would be that we support, in concept, what's been put forward here with the clarification that we're going to go, I heard, support for quarterly in terms of those expenditures brought back once the revenue's been collected, to be pushed out with a prioritization of highly visible road projects and some others, including parks, heard of that as well. But we're looking for that high visibility and homelessness, right?
I'll make that motion, or a second, if you've made the motion, however you want to address it.
You can make the motion.
Okay.
All right, so I've got the motion. I want to see, did I capture it? Is there a second there?
I don't know, I'm just going to, I'm going to ask Sonia for some clarification. So, and just because sometimes I think we're not always on the same, I think we're on the same page, but we're not on the same page. So I expressed some concerns about what was drafted here and made a statement. There's a motion now on the floor. Are we on the same page? Or is there still, given the concerns about what's drafted here, having a separate standing committee, having there be clear articulation about this not becoming, having this be very clear that we're talking about one year only, is that all to be, are we clear that that's all included in the motion that's on the table?
So the recommended actions refer to the fiscal years. So right now, you're reaffirming the budget priorities that were for '24-'25 for '25-'26, which is current year. And then for fiscal year '26-'27, that's a discussion of looking at it quarterly. So it wouldn't be in alignment with the fiscal year or the budget process, it would be independent of that. But I think the other question you had in terms of the priorities or the, we're going to have to come back and look at this every year. It's not something that we can say, and we're committing this for the following year, right? So I think that's the concern, is that this is not, it's set for fiscal year '24, I'm sorry, '25-'26. And then '26-'27, it could be, potentially could be those same priorities, if you could go back to the recommended actions. And, but I think the standing committee question and the oversight committee, I did add that to the report because there was discussion that if this goes on, if this ad hoc committee is in place for a long period, you're going to want to transition it to a standing committee. And there was also discussion and public support for an oversight committee to ensure that those dollars were being expended in the way that the public anticipated they would be used. So those two items, I'm not, I didn't bring them forward here because I knew we needed more time. What I did want is the majority of the board to give us direction in terms of what would be the next steps of, in terms of focus. So you are answering the questions. We would use those budget priorities beginning '25, I'm sorry. So for '25-'26, we're going to use those budget priorities from '24-'25. And then beginning fiscal year '26-'27, the board will allocate on a quarterly or basis, which is what was being agreed to, the revenues are new projects or programs, and then they're not going to be used for ongoing commitments. But this is for fiscal year '25-'26, unless you want to do also '26-'27.
We're saying only, '25-'26 only.
If that's a clarification you'd like to add.
At this point, my, as I shared during the comments, my concern is we won't even have collected the full year's revenue in that timeframe, so I'm not comfortable saying, hey, only for one year, given that. If we want to do two years, I'd feel comfortable, because then we would have a cycle of dollars coming through, right? We would know what that number is because it takes past the end date and then the true-up to understand how much we're dealing with.
Yeah, my motion would go for the '26-'27 for that, because the other thing we really don't know is, is there going to be variability in years? And what variability are we going to have with the economy? You know, if it's up or down, or what's going on here, as well as other, as special events that happen.
And this will give you an idea. I mean, just now, we got the quarter for fiscal, the last quarter for fiscal year '24-'25. So you're looking at August before you know what the year will end like.
Right. Okay, so just to be clear, the board is allocating funding on a quarterly basis, so it's the board making the allocation of these dollars on a quarterly basis.
What the recommendation would come to?
From the committee.
Yeah.
But it's coming to the board to say, yes, that's where we want it to go.
Okay, so I guess, so we're not on the same page, so that's not what I had commented. Those, that doesn't align with the comments that I'd made earlier, or the clarity that I'd tried to provide earlier. So that's what, so that's the clarity I was looking for. We're not on the same page in this.
On that piece. I think on the other pieces, yes, but on that piece, I don't think that found support, unless I'm wrong.
Okay, so thanks, thanks to you for clarifying that, that I can't support this motion because of the issue of it being that the, this motion here doesn't make it clear that the committee will continue to choose which projects get funded, that, I think that we need to have budgeting decisions, go through budget committee, and go through our standard budgeting process. If the committee wants to make frameworks or say that the budget priorities should be aligned in a certain way, as according to the budget priorities, I think that's clear, and I can, I think the budget committee can support that. But to have there be a separate budget process for this particular fund is not something that I can support. If we want it to be quarterly, as the funding comes in, I think that's fine. But to commit to this process that only these dollars can be used for roads for the next two years is not, also not something that I can commit to.
I don't think that's what we're saying, not just for roads. But if we're going to just do this on an annual basis, that means this money's going to sit here and accumulate for a long period of time.
I'm happy with quarterly, but I can't make that commitment for two years that we're not going to consider any kind of ongoing commitments for two full years.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're getting bogged down a little bit too much in detail. There's a lot, there's a lot that's fluid here. There's, and the money is coming in, when it's coming in, we never knew it was going to be this late to get the money from this, technically the second quarter of the year, but the first quarter that we received any money. So I think anything we're doing here, we're, you know, it's, this is something we're, we're looking, we're coming back every year, anyway. So we're not going to have the funds from all this to be able to work it into next, to '26-'27 budget process when we start that in January. That's the whole point. So I think this where I'm, I'm kind of comfortable if we go through this, whether it's a year and a half, or whatever we're talking about, till we get a full cycle of this, until we can go through and, and, you know, you're just, we're just, we're just not going to be able to put together into the annual budget. So we're going to have to, I think, look at it quarterly for a short period of time.
All right. So I know that we're in disagreement, but I think I've got a majority here, so I'm going to check, Supervisor Askew, any final?
I'm going to make a substitute motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so substitute motion to, we'll, we'll proceed with what's in front of us, that the budget priorities will, for Measure A, will mirror the, for '25-'26, will mirror the '24-'25 resolution, beginning with the '26-'27, that the board will allocate, the full board via the budget committee, will allocate funding for AA on a quarterly basis as part of the budget committee via the budget planning process, that revenues will be spent focusing on new projects and programs, to focus on roads and parks per the budget priorities as listed.
Anything else?
And then the others affirming the other items.
Do we have a second on that?
I could ask a question. So the difference in this motion from the one that's on the table is adding the language about the budget committee versus the ad hoc committee?
A separate committee for budgeting decisions.
So I, I'm happy that there's a separate committee for this funding because it does serve as some oversight. And that is another thing that, even though I was on the campaign trail, that I advocated for and stated that it would be really important that there was a designated fund for this, so it could be, decisions could be made and it wasn't just poured into the general fund. But if I am to support the motion that's on the table, I will be very mindful of what is presented for future, what is presented for approval in the future, because despite everything that's been said here today, the ballot language is what the voters read.
Agreed.
And I have concerns. I'm sorry, I can't second the motion.
Okay. See no second on that? We'll go back to the original motion and-
We just knew that that was going to happen, right? That there was going to be a second. But I just want to speak, I agree with Supervisor Daniels. I think for the beginning, this ad hoc committee serves an important purpose, so there's a kind of clear distinction for the public, that we have this committee that's going to provide this initial oversight, at least the next, first few years. And I think it could always change down the road as we find it fit. The only thing I would suggest, just as direction, just on this citizens oversight committee, to move on that sometime soon, because how big, a couple times a year? And again, it's not decision-making, it's oversight to make sure that we're, but I want to make sure that we're keeping that promise as well.
And I think part of, at least in the early conversation, the agreement was to have that online by the end of the first year, because then they're going to go back and review the dollars spent, right? That is the purpose, so, yeah. Supervisor Church, final thoughts?
Yeah, and I know this is really, you know, we've kind of raised this about ad hoc and standing, I know it's not quite in the motion, but the one, you know, we're talking about transparency here to a great degree, and the one thing you have with a standing committee over an ad hoc is it's a lot more transparent.
That's it.
And that is, you know, even if it's a short term of a few years, that is, you know, where, if we go carry this a little bit further, I think we'd be, we'd be better served by having that.
So given that, there's one piece of clarity that's not in here, if we're transitioning to standing, are we going to have to come back and make those appointments at a separate time? How does that work?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect. So given that, so motion, and a second, we've got an abundance of clarity. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, all right. And the motion passes. With that, we're going to go to item thirteen, which is continued from July eighth. And I'll turn it over to staff for presentation. Yeah, and then. And before we start, do still see hands up? Again, those hands will be part of thirteen. We expect the comments to be focused on item thirteen. We did take public comment on the last item and there were no hands up at the time. So again, at the appropriate time on this item, we'll open it back up for public comment on thirteen, which is Signal Hill, PLN two four zero zero seven seven.
Thank you Chair Lopez and good day supervisors and members of the DICE. My name is Mary Israel. I'm project planner for PLN two four zero zero seven seven, Signal Hill Design Approval, which is before you in continuance from the July eighth appeal hearing. The project is located at eleven seventy Signal Hill Road in Pebble Beach in the area regulated by the Del Monte Forest Area Land Use Plan. The design approval is required for construction of the board approved combined development permit for demolition of existing house and allowed construction of a new dwelling for the reduced project, alternative six, that was entitled in 2023. The board specified that the new dwelling would be, should be within the footprint of the existing Connell House and historic structure. Coastal administrative permits for demolition of the existing house, construction of a new single family dwelling of similar size in concept were the key entitlements. And there were also several coastal development permits that were entitled for environmentally sensitive habitat, development on slopes, development within 750 feet of known archaeological resources. There were no plans for alternative six at the time, so this was in concept. The applicant brought forward a design that was approved by the planning commission on April thirtieth, 2023. Three appeals brought it to the board on July eighth. The board found that the project design proposed in the July eighth hearing did not conform with its direction in resolution twenty three, two, three, seven. Based on evidence presented in the hearing and from the board members' review of recordings from the recording from June twenty seven, 2023 board hearing, the board found that the applicant's proposed dwelling was not within the footprint of the Connell House as it was. The board found compelling argument for upholding the appeals of the neighbor Reeves and the, and AMAP, the Alliance of Monterey Area Preservationists. Looks like it was slightly misspelled there. Preservationists is what that is. The act of disapproving the proposed design was clarified by the board to mean that another design could come forward with this project number. So the previously certified final environmental impact report is considered. The board's motion of intent included direction that the subsequent house should be of similar size to the Connell House. And that came about after board discussion about the impact to historic resources, which, so that Connell House was understood at the time to be 4,124 square feet in floor area size and 22 feet high in maximum height. Since the July eighth, 2025 hearing, the applicant has caused a modified design to be prepared for the consideration of the board. This proposes a redesign that compares the footprint, as shown in attachment D to the staff report, and takes the board's direction as instruction to remove the swapped areas. So as shown on this slide, the swapped areas are out. By eliminating the proposed development in the previous patio, approximately 600 square feet, and eliminating an exterior stairway of 180 square feet, the proposed new development would be reduced by approximately 780 square feet of coverage. The modified plans are attached to the second draft resolution, attachment B. Staff reviewed the design as modified and found that it is the same height as the previous proposal. So it continues to meet alternative six's requirement to keep heights sufficiently low to avoid ridgeline impacts. The proposed dwelling meets alternative six's reduced project requirements when compared to the original project analyzed in the EIR, as it is in approximately 7,690 square foot, two-story, single-family dwelling inclusive of a two-car garage, while the original project was for construction of an 11,933 square foot, three-story dwelling, including a three-car garage. The project proposes two cypress trees would require relocation and proposes to increase the conservation scenic easement area to match the area that will be restored. And that's 1.67 acres. Just quickly, I want to show the west elevation. The height does go up to 25.5 feet from average natural grade. Here's the east elevation. And this is, purpose of this is for design review, should the board wish to approve this project. Here's the north elevation and the south elevation. Next is a 3D rendering of the proposed redesign as seen from Seventeen Mile Drive. And here's a 3D rendering of the design as seen from Signal Hill Road. Other renderings are in the plan set. The revised design is consistent with the description of alternative six of the EIR. It meets land use policy recommendations for visual resource protection and the intent of the design control overlay. The board received several comment letters from all three appellants on this project. Massey Metapore, the applicant appellant, sent an email objecting to the staff report with several attachments, offering strike through and underline edits to the staff cover report and both draft resolutions, as well as new information updating the Connell House floor area as measured by their consultant, Witsen Engineers. The applicant wished to bring forward comments to the secretary, by the secretary to the planning commission as well, that clarified the board direction was to go with alternative six and stay in the footprint. Staff is also in receipt of updated measurements, as I mentioned. So it's in the record. Staff recommends the addition of a line to the disapproval resolution, that there is new evidence that shows the floor area can be understood to be 5,630 square feet. And that's in consistency finding and also in the sequo finding I will describe in a later slide. So that is for attachment A, which is just the direction to redesign, should you wish to go with that resolution in this hearing. The two other appellants, Reeves and AMAP, sent in letters supporting disapproval of this design. And Reeves also sent in some follow-up letters. And Massey Metapore sent in follow-up letters. The AMAP letter addressed the recent design. The second letter from Lombardo addressed the recent design. And Massey Metapore addressed the appeal letters. Staff's recommendation is on the screen now, based on the direction of the combined development permit to comply with alternative six and protect ESHA and visual resources. Staff is recommending this redesign. It is within the footprint of the Connell House as it was and with an increase, an increase to the area of the conservation scenic easement area as proposed, relocation of two cypress trees and long-term monitoring for survival. It meets all the land use plan policies. I did mention the evidence in the form of Witsen Engineering measurement of the Connell House floor area. The proposed house is still more than 2,000 square feet larger. And at maximum height, it is three feet taller than the Connell House. If the board finds this project sufficiently meets the reduced project requirements and finds it is of similar enough size in concept, this would be the final decision on the project by the county. Staff has also prepared a resolution that makes the finding that the design presented here does not meet the requirements of one part of the combined development permit, which was the similar size of the Connell House, as it is presented in attachment A. So last note, I know we're into the lunch period, but I want to say, if the board prefers to adopt the resolution that's in attachment A, staff recommends two minor edits attesting that there is new evidence that shows the Connell House floor area can be understood to be 5,630 square feet in finding one, evidence F, and a new evidence under the secret determination. That just puts it on the record that there's new evidence, but that it does not alter the findings of the EIR. Previous anecdotal measurement of the floor area of the Connell House says 4,124 was a statement by Anthony Kirk, architectural historian, in the application for federal listing and other parties, including the supervisors since. Should the board wish to update the specific direction given in resolution A, then the disapproval resolution per this July sixth hearing intent. Staff can also update the action that's in number four of that resolution. And it's now shown highlighted. Staff did not automatically update this because this was part of the verbal direction of the board in our last hearing. So we can update that if you wish. And that concludes staff's presentation and we're available for comments or questions.
All right, so at this point, I have let both sides know that there's seven minutes per side on this particular issue. So I think Ms. Metapore is online, right? Via Zoom, so we'll go ahead and give her the floor first. So Ms. Metapore will ask you to raise your hand. I know I've got quite a few there raised. I think it's the last one on the list as a guest. We'll give you the floor and give you seven minutes to share.
She has a PowerPoint. I've been trying to promote her as a panelist, but she's been declining.
Can you hear me?
I understand staff is asking you to accept being promoted to panelist on your screen so that you can share your screen as, as to get your PowerPoint up for us to see. There we go. Give her a second to pop up on the other side. All right. You should have the ability to unmute yourself and share your screen now.
Can you hear me now?
I have to share the screen.
I have to share the screen, where is that?
At the bottom, typically in green.
But, yeah, Mary is, yeah, that's the one. Can you see my screen now?
You can. It's not.
Did you say you can?
But we can see the screen. All right. Yes, we can.
Did you say yes, you can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. Let's start. Good morning or good afternoon. I'm Massey Metapore. This is my nineteenth overall hearing and ninth board of supervisor hearing. I think we finally got it right. Since the July eighth hearing, we revised the plans based upon your comments and current plans, fully comply with your order from 2023, which you reiterated last month to follow alternative six. The house is wooden footprint and below the ridge line. It really mimics the Neutra design, not just with the U shape, but also with the bend of glass and the overall orientation and modern flat roof style. We respectfully request approval of staff's resolution B. County wins because it honors your 2023 directions and brings a new, modernized, energy-efficient code. Applicant wins new, beautiful, energy-efficient, seismically sound, well-constructed, code-compliant house, which celebrates two legendary architects, Neutra and Legretta. Neighbor wins, I will not have the largest house on the block by any major. We listened to your comments and made five main changes to make sure we're fully in the footprint as rigidly defined. We deleted A section, no primary bathroom, no east western deck, no stairs, and no three-car garage. We converted to a two-car garage. The EIR considered 10 alternatives. And these alternatives were compared to my original project, which was 8,164 square feet footprint and a height of 30 feet and a floor area of 12,000. The planning commission approved alternative nine, but my neighbor Reeves appealed alternative nine and requested alternative six as a better alternative. Here is the screenshot of the letter with Lombardo's signature. It's hard to read. Next slide, this is quote from Lombardo on his letter. Approve alternative six, which will reduce the size of the proposed single-family resident to fit within the existing developed footprint, consistent with the Del Monte Forest LCP and Coastal Act, reduce building heights to avoid any extension above the ridge line. This alternative would meet most of the project objectives by providing a house a size compatible with the surrounding community and be consistent with the policy of the Del Monte Forest LCP and the Coastal Act. At the June twenty seven, 2023 board of supervisors, you approved alternative six, which gave me two design mandates. One, stay within footprint. Two, stay below the ridge line. Footprint is a horizontal measure of land. Ridge line is a vertical measure of height. At the hearing, it was clear as day that the motion and direction and discussion was alternative six and footprint. No numbers were discussed. The only number that was discussed was six. It is all on video and I have it here on this slide. At the last month, you reiterated that you want us to follow the 2023 motion and direction. Here is alternative six directly from the EIR. Here's the description of alternative six directly from EIR, saying the same thing. Existing footprint, ridge line. The current proposed house meet alternative six without question. The building footprint of the old house was 4,090 square feet. The building footprint of the proposed house in front of you is 4,122 square feet. This meets all of the requirements of the board motion 100%. This is the survey that was provided to the county to show the overlay of the footprint. It is below the ridge line and blends very well with the environment. And the ridge line was confirmed by staking and a step. The staking was ordered because the requirement was ridge line and not a specific height number. Footprint is a well-known term. A simple Google search shows it. And here is a staff clarifying the ambiguity there was in a couple of sentences. And here are some examples of staff specifically clarifying some things. And let's remember that the first time, the first line of the resolution was to approve a combined development permit for the reduced project, alternative six of the final EIR. The resolution does contain a statement regarding floor area, which is consistent with the discussion. It says development shall be limited to floor area that's possible within existing developed area. This statement shows that the parameters of footprint and height are the restrictions. And the floor area is what can fit in those two parameters. Here's alternative six project, 4.4% building footprint, no ridge line development. Here is my neighbor new project, 13.5% building footprint, almost three times the percentage as mine. A massive visually obstructive ridge line development. Reeves' house, building footprint is 6,437 square feet. The actual square footage is 6,564 square feet, whereas the old property records shows 3,872. This is the old, the old property record. Here is the side-by-side comparison of my house, my neighbor new house. Footprint minus 4.4% compared to 13.5%. The neighbor height is two feet taller than my, and the FAR is 14%. I'm at 8%. He has more FAR square footage than I have on the property.
Ms. Metapore, Ms. Metapore, we hit the seven minutes. We hit the seven minutes, so we're going to go ahead and stop now and go to the Reeves or their representative.
Ceece. So today, we learned that the 4,124 square foot home size that was in the EIR that was reviewed for years by the public, the applicant could have commented on it, could have objected to it, could have refuted the numbers, was wrong. That the, that the size of the home, the Connell home was actually 5,650 square feet, which does not exist on any plan, on any. home, was actually 5,650 square feet, which does not exist on any plan, on any document, on anywhere other than the revelation made by the applicant today, that they now claim it's 5,650 square feet. I would argue that that's absurd, number one, that after all these years, the house suddenly grew by 30%. But in addition, it really wouldn't matter because the house they're proposing is still dramatically larger than what was allowed. The resolution said the house would be no taller or larger than the existing dwelling. On the right hand of the screen, you see the, or you don't very much see, the Connell house. On the left hand, you'll see a 30-foot-high, 140 or 50-foot glass box that was proposed by the applicant in July. Next slide, please. The Connell house was not 20-something feet tall. It was 20 feet tall. My W, the red line doesn't go down far enough, but from the bottom of the W to the top of the chimney was 20 feet, and that's the requirement of your resolution from 2023. Next slide. The house is 4,124 square feet in your resolution. The new plan is 7,600s that no one has had the opportunity to review, 86% larger. The height is still 30 feet tall, not 22 feet, which was the height of the Connell house. It still goes outside of the structural footprint of the Connell house, and it still doesn't comply with the requirements for screening. Next slide, please. Here are the two plans. The July plan is scales at 30 feet tall. The plan you received last week is 30 feet tall. Next slide. The plan from July scales at 104 feet wide, the plan from last week at 106 feet wide, both 57 feet deep. Next slide. The thing that is miraculous is the rendering. So here's the applicant's rendering from July 8. Here's the one from last week. Suddenly, the house has sunk into the ground, so it looks much shorter. As you can see, it's moved. You see the green netting and then the green bush to the right of the house. Now the house is all the way over next to the green bush, and there's all kinds of screening landscaping that doesn't exist nor has been proposed. So the basic difficulty with what the applicant is trying to do again is game the system in order to keep the plan from being properly reviewed, because the house is not the same size as the Connell house. It's not the same height as the Connell house. This rendering clearly misrepresents or misillustrates the height of the house, the location of the house, and the screening of the house that doesn't exist and is not proposed to exist, or is not proposed by the applicant. The county zoning ordinance has the language, Title 20, has language in it that prevents this kind of game from being played. It says, if you want to come back with another design, you do so and start at the process over again. You don't submit stuff a day or two before the hearing. You don't submit stuff the day of the hearing, claiming numbers that no one can verify, that no one can measure, so that the board ends up being faced with a Hobson choice of hoping that they're approving something that's accurate, when we have an applicant who, over the course of the ownership of this property, has illegally cut down landmark cypress trees in the footprint of the house they wanted, illegally graded dune habitat, illegally allowed the demolition of an architectural treasure, honestly, on the National Historic Resources Board listing. In fact, Supervisor Daniels at the last meeting asked Mr. Spencer, would those have been easy things to get done if someone had followed the process? And Mr. Spencer's answer was an honest one, and the answer was no, which is clearly why the applicant asked for forgiveness rather than permission. So now the trees are gone, the dunes are graded, the Connell house is a memory, and the applicant returns with an 8,000-square-foot house, which is a 30-foot-tall glass box, which violates, which last month you decided violated your 2013 and 2023 approvals. So the last week, we got a 7,600-square-foot, 30-foot-tall glass box, which also violates those approvals. Today, we learn apparently that the Connell house, everything we knew about the Connell house was incorrect, according to the applicant. And final analysis, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, what do you tell somebody in Chular or in Casterville or Kishawa or even Pebble Beach? I handle a lot of people with a lot of violations, and they're held to the strict letter of the law. You have to comply with the orders of the county. You have to comply with the zoning ordinance, or you can't get your project approved. I guess maybe in this case, the applicant thinks if they keep saying something long enough, it becomes true. If you keep coming back with the same plan that you've been told not to do, eventually the county will give up. Appears possibly the staff has done that, and said, go ahead and do it. Well, I hope that's not the precedent we want to set today. I hope that the board will not reward the applicant for the behavior they've engaged in over all these years. I hope the board will require them to comply with the 2023 decision, which is a house that was 4,124 square feet in size, was 22 feet tall at the most highest or the highest westerly elevation, and was not a house that was moved around the site or expanded beyond the structural footprint. In my letter of August 18, I described the language from the resolution. It's not a matter of it's still, it's close enough, or it's okay, or it should be okay. That's what you said had to happen. That's what the appellant's expected to happen, and that's not what the applicant has proposed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. At this point, I'll turn to the board and see if they wish to ask questions or if they want to go to public comment at this time. All right. See nobody chomping at the bit. Let's go to public.
Other appellants here.
Oh, my apologies. Please come forward.
I'm short, I know.
Couldn't see you there, behind the dais.
I know, I'm kind of short. Good afternoon, honorable supervisors. My name is Denise Estrada, and I'm Secretary of the Alliance of Monterey Area Preservationists. We did submit a letter. I will go over that today. In the matter of the Signal Hill property, the county approved demolition of a historic Neutra-designed home, also called the Connell home. The approval came with some specifics that, to date, our agency still feels have not been fully met. The most recent submittal of redesigned plans by the applicant still does not conform with the dimensions that were, again, clearly defined by the board in your July meeting. Over this very lengthy process, a series of plan proposals have been submitted, from 11,933 square feet to 8,290 square feet, with the most recent submittal that we have seen being at 7,690 square feet. Yes, the applicant has minimally reduced the proposed plinga size, but none of these have replicated the 4,125 square feet in the footprint of the now demolished Connell home. The current planned submittal is still 3,000 square feet larger and three feet taller than the home that was approved for demolition. There is no doubt in my mind that the Legretta design proposed for Signal Hill can be a remarkable, beautiful home at an alternative site, but it continues to be noncompliant with the requirements of this specific site. Considering the applicant's repeat failure to conform to the requirements that were set out in the demolition approval process, AMAP recommends that this application be denied. AMAP also wishes to thank the Board of Supervisors for taking this action so as not to further incentivize a future party that may wish to destroy our historic resources through demolition by neglect and then act without regard for the authority of the county leaders and our regulations. We thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estrada. All right. Go back to the board one more time, see if there's any questions at this point. We'll go to public comment. All those who wish to speak, please do us a favor using the raise hand function on Zoom, star nine via landline. In order to be recognized, folks in room, feel free to come forward. We'll go to folks in room first. If you'd come forward to the dais, we'll give each speaker two minutes. Mrs. Estrada had 4:11 left.
She had 4:34.
4:34. Okay, let me.
Good afternoon.
One second.
Good afternoon. Chair Lopez and Board of Supervisors, my name is Sateez Katavar, and I am Massey Metropore's son. I am very proud to call her my mom. While her list of accomplishments is endless, her love of family is above all else. For me, today is about what it means to be honorable. The neighbor is asking the Board of Supervisors to not be honorable. He is asking you to not honor what you said from the dais in June 23. Going back and watching the video, the direction you gave and the motion you passed were clear as day. It was Alternative 6, Alternative 6, Alternative 6, and footprint, footprint, footprint. We tell our kids, say what you mean and mean what you say. But the neighbor is asking the board to not do that. I asked one of my teenage sons to watch the video, and then I asked him, what direction did they give Grandma? He said Alternative 6 and footprint. I then asked him what he thought footprint meant. He said, where on the sand the house is. A 16-year-old can see how obvious the direction was, and yet the neighbor wants to completely distort reality and ask the board to not be honorable. I know you are honorable. I may not have always agreed with your decisions, but I never questioned whether you were honorable. The community needs to be able to trust and rely upon what its elected officials say from the dais, and I am confident you will honor that trust today. County Council also made it clear that when there is any ambiguity or question about a resolution, that the actual hearing, the video, the motion are what control. Again, the video was very clear, just as the very first line of the resolution, for that matter. My last comment is for the neighbor. It is time for him to be honorable. Just two years ago, he specifically asked for Alternative 6. It is time to honor that request. Sam, I have heard you say you love golf because it's a window into the soul of a man. It's a great quote. Likewise, I would say how you treat your neighbors is the window into the soul of a man. It's time for you to honor the Alternative 6 request.
Thank you.
And put this all behind us so we can move forward as good neighbors. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to Zoom now. I do see some hands up. They're blocked on the way I'm currently seeing the screen. Sorry, Roberta. We're going to have to ignore your call for now. We're going to go to, it looks like Dr., is that Aiden or Adam? Adam, Dr. Adam will give you the floor again, speaking to item 13 on today's agenda. You should have the ability to unmute yourself now.
I can't hear you, Dr. Adam. We're going to send you to the back of the line and give you one more chance to figure out your audio. Thank you very much. We're going to go to, what is that?
Kyra Q.
Kyra Q. We'll go ahead and do, Dr. Adam, we're muting you, and we're going to go to Kyra Q and give you a chance. Kyra Q, this is your chance for
I think he's
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next.
I think he did.
We're going to go to Jeffrey. Jeffrey Beacon? Beckham, Jeffrey Beckham?
Yes, this is Jeff. Can you hear me?
Come on, Jeff.
Are you ready?
Yep, go for it.
All right. My name is Jeffrey Beckham. I've been with the Alliance of Monterey Area Preservationists in various capacities for the past 20 years, and I've watched the process of this house go from something that was salvageable to being just a complete wreck. And it was a very sad process to watch over. Well, I was first aware of this
Jeffrey, you became muted there. I'm pausing your time.
I don't know what happened.
We've got you now.
I became aware of this project originally when the landmark cypress trees were cut down, and I was really discouraged because after they were cut down, the applicant was allowed to just put them in different places and plant new small trees. And that was really discouraging because it just showed that you could get away with things. And I think that's the process that this applicant has used from the very start. Just keep doing things, keep bulldozing, and eventually everyone will give up. Well, I'd hope, and I think the last July meeting showed, that you won't necessarily give up. And I hope that it doesn't occur this time. It's really important that we set a precedent that you just can't do what you want, particularly when you've got important historic resources in your hands. And so I hope that you will uphold the appeal and make sure that it doesn't go forward with the current plans. It really needs to follow the idea of keeping within the size and height of the original Connell house. Their original plans are available. You can measure those plans. They say what the size is. And so I hope that there's no real debate about this at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next up, I have John K. John K., we're going to give you the ability to unmute yourself. John K., the floor is yours. One second. He hasn't been promoted yet. John, at this point, we're sending you the ability to promote to speak, but you've got to accept it on your end. Final call here. All right. Thank you, John. We're going to go to Pavey. Pavey, I'll give you the floor.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can, but it sounds like you have a device on behind you, so we're getting an echo. If you could turn that off.
Yes.
All right. Do we have you muted now?
This is, this is Pavey. I'm Massey's daughter, and I had arranged for Mary to play a video. Can you not start the clock until she starts the video? The video is just under two minutes.
All right. Starting the clock now. Go for it. Oh, one second. The video is being shared.
Is it shared?
I see it on the
I don't see it up above.
I see it on the version here, but not in Chambers, but it is up. Okay.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[918.69]
The building will be silhouetted against the sky on the top of a ridge when viewed from a common public viewing area. So that could be a stretch of road or points along that road. It can be Fanshell Beach in this case, which is a public viewing area. So with the the design that was considered by the board in July, the applicant in advance of that hearing did put up staking and flagging of the proposed design at that point, which did have some components of it that were at 25 feet in height. Ms. Israel did go out, do the inspections, visual inspections with unaided vision, looking back from those public viewing areas to see if that orange netting was silhouetted against blue sky in the background or gray sky it may have been. So in Pebble Beach, I don't know what time of the year it was, but they, at that point, it was not considered ridgeline development based on the staking and flagging in our onsite investigations. We didn't choose to go back through that analysis because the height is the same at 25 feet and still in the same footprint and location.
Okay. And then in terms of today's action, it could go two different ways. There could be a denial, which would be your first resolution, and there can be a, we could vote to support the second resolution. Is, are either of those appealable? Do you, do you envision that either path could ultimately end up at the Coastal Commission?
Yeah, so the Coastal Commission does not take appeals of denials, except in rare circumstances where it's a Public Works project or something. But if the board were to deny this application, it would not, that decision would not be appealable to the Coastal Commission. If the board were to approve, it would be appealable to the Coastal Commission, and then they can decide to take, take it up with substantial issue or not substantial issue.
Sorry, I didn't mean to look at my colleague over there. Okay, that, I didn't realize that. Okay, well, I will say this is probably, well, since January, I can definitely say this is my least favorite item that's come before us at the County Board of Supervisors. This is a very, very difficult item, and it's, it's caused a lot of upset, distrust, anger, resentment, you know, amid the community. And, and, and it is very real that a landmark cypress was removed, that, that was helpful to the, the, the design of the new home. It is very real that a home that, that was of value to the community was destroyed and at a time when it was asked explicitly to be preserved. But my, my, my deliberation, just so folks are clear, is yes, there've been 19 hearings and the applicant has gone through a, a long period of time, but that long period of time is because she's sort of been dragged kicking and screaming through a process that everybody else has to go through. And so what I'm debating right now is whether or not what is before us in this alternative is, is what someone like a neighbor or any other applicant in Monterey County, had they followed the rules, gone through ultimately? Have we gotten to the same place? I don't have an answer to that question, but I just put that out to my colleagues. I mean, that's sort of where I'm, where I'm landing. I, and I, and I'm assuming, because I have a high respect for the Planning Commission, that must have been where they finally got, because I did not understand that decision when we heard it in July. So this is a smaller project, and I think the question before us is, is whether or not it's consistent with your, not, not just your intent, but actually what you said in your hearing last year, and, and if it's consistent with the Alternative Six in the EIR, and whether or not an applicant who, who has not followed the rules, has ultimately been forced to follow the rules, for lack of a better way to put it. And that's where I've landed.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Alejo? None? All right, then, you know, for me, this is, again, a tough one. We've been through it many iterations, seen it in several versions, and I largely appreciate the question asked by Supervisor Daniels, as have we reached a point where that is the same conditions or experience that anybody would have experienced? And I think for the tree, I can say no, right, given that piece. But the rest, where it's at, I mean, does it meet the conditions within that red footprint? Yes. Talk to me about that inner courtyard there. What am I looking at? I know that was part of the conversation last time. I'm looking at, is that impervious? What are those lines that I'm looking at on the design?
Right. It's proposed as pervious.
Pervious, okay. So like pervious concrete or stones is that? Or are we talking about DG?
In looking at the 3D renderings, it looked like it was, there're like low walls on the outside area, and that there would be some stone or something inside there, pebble.
Okay. So, also, I think my only concern, given the question asked and the things I've already stated, comes back to the question of flagging and staking, which I heard addressed, and the comment was that it was done for an earlier version of the project, and the assumption is that the height had not changed, and for that reason, it wasn't redone as part of the investigation of this project, right? And so I think for me, that's, that's the one piece, given the visuals that were provided and the fact that they look so different. It's hard to trust, given that, but I think that's something we all have to ask. Are we comfortable? I would have felt more comfortable if we'd done it and gone out and looked at it and taken that time, given where we're sitting today and the visuals that were provided. Again, that's somebody's mistake, I'm sure. Which way does it lean? I don't know. And in the end, I, it brings me back to that question of during construction, who's going to be on site to say, hey, right? Is that met, is that not met? We've all seen that. I mean, all over my district, I've seen things say, people say, oh, that won't be part of it, and then in the end, it's like, well, it was a decision made onsite day of, and we had to. Okay, so I'm concerned about meeting those expectations as we move forward, given the history of the project. So those are my thoughts. I don't have a direction or a recommendation. I appreciate the difficult decision we're about to undertake and understand that I may have to see this again at some point. Supervisor Alejo?
Now, just, just quick comment, just for staff that you brought that up. Shouldn't, shouldn't we know if we don't have all the details of the space, this courtyard, whatever it may be? Shouldn't we have the right answers? And then another issue was brought up, whether this, all the, in the image of that kind of, we thought the house was kind of moved here, but one of the concerns was there's some green scape here, foliage, trees. Is that included in the plan, or is it not included in the plan? Because this image, what we're being presented by the applicant, makes it seem like, like that's included, but the applicants are saying that that, that's not a part of their plan as modified and as before us today.
So through the chair, there is a condition of approval on the original entitlement for a landscape plan to come forward, and it would allow some shrubs, but they'd have to be native dune landscaping plants. So there is the anticipation that there would be some landscaping around, and there is still the required condition of approval on the previous combined development permit, saying you have to put that tree in front on the west side.
Yes.
So I think it does relatively reflect how it would be built out, and then the caveat is that often when someone, but when an applicant asks for a 3D rendering, someone takes a little artistic license and throws in some plants because they think it looks better.
Right. Exactly. And just on the, on the first part of that, the plans for this, this, kind of this horseshoe empty area, what's happening there? You just said, you thought, you knew what was going in there, but we don't know. And as Supervisor Lopez got me thinking, we should know exactly what those plans are so that as they're constructing, it doesn't change on the spot. And then we're being told, we approved something, but something else was built beyond with what we're, we're looking at today.
Understood. And there's, the best way to handle that question, and also the question that was brought up having to do with the height verification, is to just put conditions of approval right on this particular design approval that require that that be, you know, as described, just pebble, or maybe it has to stay as the landscaped area, like the, the previous plan, I mean, the previous house. Previous house had that kind of a landscaped dune area. And similarly with the height verification, a height verification condition approval can be put onto this as well.
And, and I'm going back to the 2023 motion, because I think, just for the record and for future hearings, I think getting some guidance from our county council's office, if there is any ambiguity while we're in a hearing, let's clarify it now. Keep, and there's some interpretation on the footprint, right? But then, I think the intent, though, the legislative intent of this body was, at least from my standpoint, was square footage, keeping the square footage and the height of the original house, because we even talked back then, we could build, one alternative is to build, rebuild the house as it was, or rebuild a different house, but we said square footage, but I think my intent was same square feet, same height, as, as, because we were concerned that trees were being cut, that the dunes were being changed inappropriately, noncompliant with law, and that a historic home was demolished by negligence. And, and, and the destruction to the home was so unique, I think we all expressed concerns that, how, how could somebody who invested in a home allow that to happen where there was no, there was no way to even salvage the home because of the unique type of destruction to, to the integrity of, of the, of the structure? I agree with our historical society, public comments today, that, that is very concerning. It was concerning then, it's concerning till this day. So I don't know where the, the board is going to go, but I want to just express what I was thinking then, and, and that we, then in the future, we should, if there is any ambiguity, staff should make sure, let's be clear, is it just a footprint, which has its certain definition in, in, in these types of permitting process, or is it square, exact square footage, exact same height? Let's be clear on it. I think, so I think that some, some of the back and forth is going, has occurred, because we didn't ask those right questions at the right time, and we could have avoided, we could have avoided all this, or a lot of this, I should say.
Supervisor Church. Supervisor Askew?
Well, did you want to go first, Supervisor? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, and to the question of conditions of approval, and I don't know if this is the right place to have something, but just, the question of ensuring, ensuring the rest of the protection of the site, are we doing everything that we need to do to, to ensure that development of this property occurs as, as we're, as we're now giving direction, and if we do give approval to move forward? Given the history of, of this site and this property and this previous home that was here, can you just speak briefly to the assurances and actions that, that we, that we're taking to, to, to ensure that we don't find ourselves in a, in a situation? And I think that we do have a, we have a duty to provide extra diligence in this particular case.
Yes, through the chair, one of the conditions of approval that's applied, that's in draft conditions of approval attached to the resolution in Attachment B, is condition number eight, conformance with conditions of approval for PLN 100338. So that requires that all of the conditions that were on the combined development permit, and there's currently a signed mitigation monitoring reporting plan agreement in place with the applicant, with the permit holder. All of those were followed through by strict adherence with the conditions of approval, and that is particularly how we ensure that the landscaping goes in, meets the requirements of the landscaping, as was described in the EIR, that accommodates for biological impacts and potential impacts to view shed. It's all been discussed in the EIR and rolled forward through those conditions of approval.
So I think that was a pretty technical and correct answer, but really, it's, you know, I would look to Mary. After this meeting, make sure there's a note in our system that says, ensure that the building plans match what's been approved in concept and the design approval by the board. So we don't have the nuts and bolts. A building permit does have to follow, and there is a level of review that planning team does on building permit applications, including ensuring that all conditions are met. And then the inspection of the foundation and its footprint is looked at and measured by our inspectors if anything changes. Ideally, that note will be there, saying, don't just make changes in the field, which often can occur with minor things with building inspectors. So there is a, an extra step we will have to go through to make sure that there's a added level of scrutiny and security around that, but putting notes in our system, having those communications, having those checks and balances are all in place.
And in the event that there, that there, that there is a discrepancy that occurs, what, what then would, would happen?
So we'd either have them change all of what they've done, essentially say, you're not permitted to do that, so you have to put it back to the way it was permitted, or they would have to come back through a hearing process for revisions and have that approved. And in, in the meantime, they would probably not be working on the rest of the home construction at whatever point that might be, so hopefully that doesn't occur. But usually, there's just the two options, is one, put it back the way it was approved, or two, get it permitted and then be allowed to proceed with construction.
Got it. Great, thank you. And then just my final comment is the question about the horseshoe spot in the middle, I think, being really clear about that horseshoe spot, I think the, the map that we saw, that, that, you know, I think that was an impervious area. It was not a part of the buildable footprint on the, the design that we'd seen. I think the EIR showed that not to be part of the previous buildable footprint. So I think to be very clear about our expectation on that, and to have that clarified in whatever way that needs to be clarified, so that now we're in the future, we're, we're very explicit to that point.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're trying to find a label on what those things are in the plans, but we're clear that they are not part of the footprint, they're not walls, they're pervious, and potentially they're landscaping, but we do need to get that clarity or make that clear as part of today's motion.
Thank you.
Supervisor Church.
Well, I hope whatever we do today, we don't bring this thing back. I don't think there's any desire to want to see this again, and I really concur with my colleagues, this is really a difficult decision. Supervisor Daniels laid it out really clear, but everybody else pretty much reiterated that. With that, you know, in consideration, again, I have to go back to the July 23, you know, motion at that point, and I, I felt we, we really set down what the conditions were at that point. And I understand that some disagreements on what a footprint means, whether it really means what there is at the ground level, or whether there is a square footage. I know in my intent, it was just what there was on the ground level, as long as it met within the Alternative Six conditions on ridgeline development. And I, that was my motion I made back then. I, I look at this, and I see it fits that motion, so I feel, I feel compelled from, from setting that goal line at that point, that, that goal line is the goal line that has been met at this point. So I, as I said a little bit earlier, I feel I'm going to support that, and I'm going to make a motion to support into that, but I also want to be open to the issues that are raised here about having verification within that horseshoe area, about height and everything else. So I don't know if my colleagues, I'm, I'm open to, to amendments on, on confirming that verification, or how we want to go about that, but my motion would be to accept the recommendations as they stand, and as again, open for, for any amendments that we feel that we need to do within there.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I just wanted to get staff's, just on, on the point, no development in that, that entry area, back entry area? You said you needed some, we probably, we could put some conditions on that, like, could you elaborate on that? Then also on the landscaping, are we requiring a landscaping plan or, or not?
The landscaping is a condition of approval.
Already? Okay, good.
And the clarification would be that essentially those boxes on the, inside the courtyard cannot be part of the impervious surfaces and footprint of the home. It would potentially be landscaping, that or pervious material.
That will be included into the motion?
Fine with that.
In terms of clarification on that, and I know this is going to be a little in the weeds, quite literally, I think requiring in the landscaping plan it be native plants is critical. I mean, given the dune habitat, given where this home sits, given the loss that we already have in that cypress tree, I know that typically you can choose anything. I know that there's already bans on certain, you know, ice plants and others based on their negative impact on the habitat. So keeping it to native plants, I think, would be a good compromise to bring back some of that habitat that's been lost in the process. So just a request there. We did get like an hour-long presentation on native plants at the Coastal Commission, and they identified two homes in Pebble Beach as best case and worst case, so I've been using that as a basis here, so shout out to Coastal staff.
Chair, I, I do want to make sure that if there is a motion, if the motion includes adding one of our standard conditions on height verification, which would require the applicant to put a benchmark onsite, and when they construct the home and the ridge lot, the ridge of the home before they put on the roofing materials, that they take a measurement from that benchmark to make sure that that height is not exceeded.
I don't see nodding from the motion maker.
Yes.
So let the record reflect that that is part of the motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion? I think that's still where I'm.
So to clarify the, the three conditions, then, you've got the height condition, the impervious, the pervious structure, and the native plants, that should already be a condition in this, in the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan area, I'm hoping, but we're adding extra, extra muscle to that.
Yes, so we're pulling up the conditions to verify that it says native plants. If it doesn't, we'll add it. It does, it does say.
On PLN 100338, there's a mitigation measure that requires all native sand dune plants in the landscape plan, and that is still applied.
You'll second it? I've got the second from Ask You. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I do see a hand up via Zoom. Again, we're done with that. Thank you so much for putting that forward. I'm going to ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm going to abstain, given the fact that I will probably vote on this again.
I'll go in as an aye.
Okay, so we've got a four, one here, four, zero, one, just to be clear. So with that, we've concluded this item. We're going to proceed with our agenda at this time, which is to jump into other board matters, beginning with a referral matrix update, starting with a new referral from Supervisor Alejo. We'll go to the CAO to read that one in.
Yes, the purpose of the referral is to enact a spay and neuter ordinance for cats and dogs to address overpopulation euthanasia rates and overcrowded shelters with minimal staffing. And this stems from a recent presentation by some of the young supervisors, then Supervisor Alejo has now brought this forward, and it's been assigned to the Health Department.
Supervisor Alejo?
And I wanted to say, this was truly from them, my following up because of their presentation, I kind of, it's come up before, I just never thought about following through on it, but after their presentation, I thought this would be a good time for us to move forward in light of the information and that we know, like, I think over 30% of our, of our pets that end up at the shelter are euthanized. If there's something that we could do to reduce that significantly, I think now's the time to, to move forward, and hopefully we could inspire the 11 other cities that haven't done it. Seaside just did it last November, went to effect in December, but hopefully we can encourage other cities to do the same, because the response ends up on the SPCA in Monterey County, or it ends up at our shelter that is run by, by the County of Monterey and the City of Salinas, which are always limited on staff and other resources there.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor. With that, we're going to jump into the CAO's comments.
So today, we want to recognize the work that's done by our emergency communications team. These are our 911 dispatchers and the team that works to ensure that we're all receiving assistance when they call 911. And the fence project has been completed at that site, which addressed some safety issues and securing the building for staff and operations. The department achieved a 5% improvement in 911 call answering times. Of the 206,887 emergency calls received, 88.5 were answered within 15 seconds or less. In total, over 740,000 calls were handled this year between our dispatchers and our AI bot, which is through Amazon Connect. In terms of innovation and technology, AI call answering with Amazon Connect resolved one-third of non-emergency calls and was quickly adapted for events like Vistra's battery fire, the Fourth of July, and Car Week. The department completed major technology improvements, including the CAD rehost to modernize the system. And workforce development in the last fiscal, in the last fiscal year, the department promoted six trainees of communications dispatcher, level dispatcher two, reflecting continued improvements in training program. In terms of accountability and community feedback, the department sent 24,428 customer surveys and received an 88% positive feedback, and launched a new AI quality assurance program that reviewed over 24,000 calls with an 86% protocol adherence rate, supporting accountability, and staff development. So just want to send a shout out to our emergency communications team and all the great work that they're doing.
Thank you, CAO. With that, we're going to jump into board comments. I'll start to my right, if Supervisor Askew wants to go first.
Let's see here. I, I wanted to briefly give a quick shout out of thanks to our Public Works team for assisting with a quick response. We had a sign blow over on the freeway a year ago that directed folks to the Regent Monterey landfill, and so as we're working to address illegal dumping in the county, the directional sign that leads folks into the landfill has been missing. So that was brought to our attention, and we're working to get an interim solution up with Caltrans, and Public Works is going to jump in and work to get, get an interim solution so that we can make sure that people get their waste delivered to the landfill and not dumped on the side of the road. Our landfills are open to receive trash deliveries, and that's where we want waste taken. Our Regent Monterey also has a new, we just cut the ribbon on a brand new little house that welcomes folks and weighs the garbage. So we, we want, we want everyone to come, find their way to Regent, to deliver their, their trash at the appropriate locations. So make your way up to Regent at the, at the end of Del Monte in Marina to, to see the, the new, the new Way House and get your garbage to the appropriate location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wanted to start my comments today by really thanking the, our facilities division manager, Ryan Bell, but in particular, three employees who helped us put up these beautiful designs yesterday in the lobby. Even our tallest ladder couldn't get us up there, they needed a cherry picker, and they had to, they came up with the idea of using this Velcro to not damage any of the pillar there. They were just total professionals, and they made it look so easy. I want to thank Alex Zamora, Juan Zarata, and Jeff Panoni for their help in doing that. They were just really great, and, and they made, they met us, our ideas for the exhibit were even better because of their suggestion. So thank you, gentlemen, for all, for supporting us and helping us there yesterday. I also wanted to just commend all the volunteers for the Powell Police Athletic League car show last Saturday in Old Town Salinas. It was a big success. I think it's the biggest car show. I think it's the biggest car show held in Salinas, and it raises money for youth sports. And at the same time, I was able to hold my mobile office hours there at the Salinas Farmer's Market in Old Town. So I want to thank them for allowing us some space. Linda and Jasmine and I were there, able to talk to a lot of our local residents, and that was great. Last but not least, I just wanted to tell everyone, I know Monday is Labor Day, but it's a good moment to thank all our 6,000 employees. Thank you for what you do for the people of Monterey County every day throughout the year. And I know the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council has a Labor Day event that it always has at the Romo Park there in downtown Watsonville. I'll be attending that. And just to let the public know, we don't have a meeting for the next two weeks, so we will be back on September 16th. So, thank you.
Supervisor Church.
Not too many things. I did attend Roma's Day here on Sunday, which is always a big event out in North County in Roma's. And it was a nice day, and Roma seems to get all the sun while the rest of us get a lot of fog out there, that's for sure. But it was really great. It was great to see a lot of people out there. And the only other item I really have coming up is next Thursday, what is next Thursday? Not this Thursday, but the Thursday after this. I should, the fourth, is it the fourth? Yeah, the fourth, September 4th. Having a town hall out at Rancho Cielo for Bolsonols Nativatad Communities at 5:30 to 7:00. And I don't think I have much else to say outside of everybody enjoy an extra day on Labor Day.
Supervisor Daniels.
Thank you, Chair. I had a busy week, I think, but what I'm remembering and recollecting is a very nice pasta with the pastors that happened last week, and it was a fundraiser for iHelp. And if you don't know iHelp, it was, it was, it was one of those days where it was a long day, and I thought, this is like the best way to end the day, to be around folks that are all volunteers and making such a huge difference in terms of getting a roof over individuals' heads. They have a male program and a female program, and, or men's program and a women's program, and they just do such good work. And it was a wonderful event, very successful fundraiser, and I was really glad to be able to go. I did get this week to meet the new COO of 3CE, Brian Vosberg. That was, that was exciting and was a great meeting. I have one community meeting coming up that's on the third. This is with the residents of Berry Drive. The meeting is going to be from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Buena Vista branch of the Monterey County Free Libraries. And I, we're going to have at the meeting the outstanding questions that folks had from the meeting that we, the first meeting we had on the transitional home that's being proposed in this, in their neighborhood, the Miranda House. And in the first meeting, we were able to have HCD and our CAO, Sonia de la Rosa, came. And we will get other folks from the Department of Corrections there to answer outstanding questions. But it will be important that we also have folks from, for example, environmental health, even though I feel like we've answered those questions over and over and over again. It would be important, since they continue to ask those questions, that we continue to answer them. So we'll be working on that between now and the third for hopefully a very successful meeting. Thank you.
All right. Because I missed it this morning, I want to thank Nick Pascooley, Supervisor Alejo, and everybody who helped shine light on the 175th anniversary of our county, this beautiful place we all call home. And once more, reiterate that there is a publication that'll be included in the Monterey County Weekly this week. I know an email just went out to the team as well within the county, letting everybody know that there's a video that comes along with this, if you want to watch that and get a copy of this particular release that is just a helpful way to look back on our first 175 years as we look forward to the next. So thank you, Nick Pascooley, for taking the lead on that. We've been working on that for a while. I also want to commend the folks from Relay for Life for all that they're doing to make sure that that is seen as a regional event and not just a Salinas event. Historically, they were kind of titled for each city, but as we move forward, we want to make sure that we really rally around those folks in our community who have need and who have history and who have lived experience with cancer, and let them know that they're not alone and that there are resources for them through this particular effort and others. It's about being the connective tissue that folks need to heal, recover, or find closure in certain instances. So just want to make sure the community knows that that event is for all of us. As we move forward, there'll be more opportunities to partner and be part of that in future years. I know that later this week, I'll be at the Reservoir Farms grand opening. Want to acknowledge that in District Four, it's just on the other side of the road, wrong side. If it was on the other side of the road, it'd be in District Three, but we're going to give that one to District Four. Look forward to being in District Four this Thursday for that event. And this morning, I had the CSDA conference kickoff, and I was, I had some issues getting there on time, but I was able to still give a welcome to everybody, and that was exciting. Shout out to Kyle there who brought in, they had a packed house, over 1,000 registrants. So that was really crazy to see the number. Joe Theismann was their speaker this morning, football legend, so it was neat to hear him give advice to everybody as their kickoff this morning as well. So again, welcome them to Monterey County. I hope they enjoy their time here and learn a lot. And lastly, want to take a point of personal privilege to congratulate my uncle, and who's also my godfather, and his wife, Joaquin Teresa Lopez, who'll be celebrating 50 years together this weekend. And so that's where I'll be Saturday, helping them acknowledge that golden anniversary. So congratulations to them. And with that, I'm going to turn to County Council to read us out of closed session for the County Board of Supervisors agenda.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I do have one readout for the County Board of Supervisors closed session items from this morning. The readout is as follows. The Board of Supervisors has approved a package tentative agreement with the Union of American Physicians and Dentists for bargaining Unit U with the term ending June 30, 2028. And that's it for the county.
All right. So then we do have a Board of Supervis, so with that, we're going to actually adjourn the Board of Supervisors, but I do want to share our adjournment in memory of. I know staff has prepared a photo to put up for us. And so with that, I'm going to ask that they put that photo up, and this is acknowledging the passing of Officer Edward Alfaro. We want to take a moment to recognize and honor someone whose presence, dedication, and spirit has left an impact on all of us. We're paying special tribute to Edward, who was a cherished member of the probation department for over 20 years. He brought more than just skill and experience. He brought heart, integrity, and a deep commitment to his work, his colleagues, and the values that we all hold dear here in Monterey County. Though he's no longer with us, his legacy will continue to shape our workplace in many meaningful ways. We're inviting you all to join us in remembering Eduardo to celebrate not just the years he gave to the department, but the kindness, wisdom, and friendship that he shared along the way. There will be services for Eduardo, and the family wanted to make sure to have us share those out with you today, so they'll be held in Hollister at 870 San Benito Street at the Grungel Amen Nelson Funeral Home from 3:00 to 7:00 on August 28th, which is this Thursday. Again, 3:00 to 7:00, August 28th in San Benito, I'm sorry, on San Benito Street, 870 in Hollister, California. And the services, after the services, a celebration of life will also be held at Armitas, who is his sister's home. And so if you want those details, please reach out. But again, today, we are adjourning the Board of Supervisors meeting in special tribute and in recognition of the loss of a dear friend in Eduardo Alfaro. And now to the question of the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, closed session. We'll go to council.
Yes, we're going to be going back into closed session for the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, and I can state now that there will be no reportable action from that closed session, and the board will just adjourn from that closed session when it's complete.
With that, we're adjourned with the Board of Supervisors, and we will recess at a closed session with the Water Resource Agency Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
May Eduardo Alfaro live in peace. Rest in peace.[1495.26]